To call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 14th. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand or sit, whichever your preference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the meeting agenda is to approve, sorry, one minute. To approve the agenda, items to remove from the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything to remove from the consent agenda? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'd like to remove the minutes from, let me just make sure, it's April 9.
Item E?
No, no, I'm sorry, it's not April 9. April 2nd. We're just gonna, I'll work with Bonnie to add some of the written, the documented, written comments from public comment.
Oh.
So it's my oversight, not to question her earlier.
Are we pulling the guidance director for deliberation or not?
Uh, yes.
Someone should pull it.
Okay. So we'll pull item C of the minutes, special school board meeting, April 2nd.
Yeah, and I'll just bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay.
But are we pulling item 6B, any routine hiring, like the VHS guidance position to talk about?
Would you like to do that?
I was just wondering if someone was.
Would anyone like to pull anything else from the consent agenda?
I'll pull it.
Okay.
Or move to the deliberative agenda, the VHS guidance director recommendation, please?
Item B?
Uh, that's part of item 6B.
Thank you. Commissioner Wick, item 6B. Thank you. Okay. All right, will someone make a motion to amend the agenda in the following manner in the consent agenda?
So who?
Commissioner Carey, second?
Second.
Commissioner Pillsbury? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any abstention? The motion carries. Thank you. Next is the motion to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Alwell, second. Commissioner Sowers. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone here have a public comment?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Shelley Mathiostis.
Sean Horcel.
I'm principal of Edmonds Elementary. Sean is currently principal at SA, soon to be principal at Flynn. And we've come this evening to speak to the proposed amendment to policy 2.2 concerning hiring, and we object to the proposed changes as they impose conditions on hiring that are unnecessary constraints. Every school has areas that can benefit from addition of individuals with skill sets, the need for which may not be evident to the public but are evident to the administration. This policy would impose those without expertise or knowledge of the needs of a school or Vermont teaching or leadership standards in the hiring process. We should always be seeking those with good skills who are capable of learning and adjusting to the position to which they are hired, magnet schools or otherwise. Our criteria grid has included specific attributes for both magnet schools. Hiring committees typically add questions that deep digger as we look for specific attributes that the school community needs. We are already capable of adjusting any posting for positions to specify what we are seeking. There are times when hiring is emergent and we need to move quickly. The proposed change would significantly, significantly alter our ability to do so. I am able to gather my personnel quickly to serve on hiring committee. My employees are invested in the process of hiring as they have a direct investment in the quality of the individual with whom they will be working. I have no control over the availability of members of the PTO or community partners, nor can anyone guarantee that there would always be interest by those constituents in participating in a hiring process in the future. Including this language in the policy has a serious potential to delay hiring while these requirements are met. The staff at both IAA and SA spoke in favor of the recent administrative hires at both schools.
That's a terrible cable.
It is a terrible cable. I know that I can be heard a mile away.
You can, for that.
Yes, I can.
Recession.
Recession, my cafeteria, anyway. I was involved in the hiring committee for all the schools, and I felt that the process served both magnets well, and there is no need for the language, for this language to be in the policy.
Did I miss something, LaShawn? Please.
I just want to kind of really echo what Shelley is saying. So when you're thinking about hiring, hiring happens all throughout the year, and so therefore there's times where it needs to be expedited and moved fairly quickly. There's times that we have the luxury of more time. And I have to say, when buildings have the opportunity, they do add their constituents at the table to be able to help make those informed decisions, and also they may query them in the sense in a survey or something like that to be able to use as they put questions forth for candidates. Also, with the process, we need to really think about administrators. We've been trained, so we have anti-bias training that we have all gone through in order to be able to do the training. And that's really, really important, because as we are diversifying our staff population, we really need to make sure that people are coming to the table with that anti-bias lens. Like I shared a little bit before, and also Shelley did as well, we need to collaborate. So we do work really hard on that collaborative piece as much as possible. Anytime I kind of look at policy, sometimes it's, there's a lot of rigidity to policy, and we will need to make sure that we have some flexibility with our hiring. And when you have policy that is so rigid, it makes it really hard for us to complete a task, and if you haven't noticed, there has been a shortage, not only in Vermont but many other states, and so therefore time is of the essence. And so you don't have the luxury of kind of waiting, 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 you lose your candidates. And I think we've already kind of felt that this year as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, LaShawn.
Shelley, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at public comment?
Seeing none, we'll move on from public comment to board reflection. Is there any commissioner that would like to make a board reflection at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Next on the agenda is good news. We have some wonderful Burlington School District students here tonight, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent O'Bank to introduce us to the good news.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me? Testing? Yeah? Yes, thank you. Oh, thank you. It gives me great pleasure to take this opportunity to honor a number of our students today. I'm gonna start with Colton. Colton, Colton's here. Colton, you wanna come on up? And I've got a little bit of a blurb here to kind of explain why Colton's here today. Colton is here for the Golden Wrench. Congratulations to Burlington Technical Center student Colton Pullen, a recent recipient of the 2019 Vermont Automobile Enthusiast Golden Wrench Award. Each year, the Vermont Automobile Enthusiast Award is presented to 16 high school juniors for their hard work, dedication, and knowledge in the field. Winners of the Golden Wrench Award receive top-of-the-line Mac tools. Nice, nice. A letter of recommendation, okay? From who? I don't know, but. A marble trophy in the student's name. Oh, that's very nice. Two copies of the book by Deidre Leslie Peliki, The Physics of NASCAR. Four free admission still show tickets for students and 10 for the instructor. Wow. One-year membership to Vermont Automobile Enthusiast. In addition to this, to his academic achievements at BTC and Burlington High School, Colton is a captain of the VHS hockey team, and for the last year he has served as a volunteer firefighter for the Mallett's Bay Fire Department. Colton had to write an essay to apply for Golden Wrench Award, and as part of that, he had to share his goals. He writes, "My goals after high school are to go to college for fire science and electrical engineer, engineering. I hope to become a full-time firefighter and when I'm not on the shift, to have a job as electrical engineer." Congratulations, Colton, and well done.
Let's also invite Colton's parents up here. And his teacher, Father Church, is here, and director of BTC, Tracy Resiko, is also here.
Do you want to take a picture?
No.
You go first.
Got it. Thanks. Okay, here. One more.
And then we'll get one with Church.
Oh, yeah. I don't want to see that.
All right.
They called my hair today.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much better. Thank you very much. All right. The fun is not over. We do have other achievements to honor here. The Junior Iron Chef. This past March was Vermont Feeds 2019 Junior Iron Chef Competition. The BTC Culinary Art Fielder Team named Team Slice, Dice, and Spice, and they're here. The team was made up of three BTC students who are also VHS juniors, Jake Bergeron, Matthew Huen, and John Nguyen. We are pleased to recognize this team as having won the Crowd Pleasers Award for the high school AM Heat Division. The Slice, Dice, and Spice award-winning recipe was Vermont Roots, a dish of root vegetables and apples, tossed with goat cheese, pecans, and dressed with maple, masala, vinaigrette, topped with mushroom, ceviche, pea shoots, and kiwanja cheddar nuggets. Wow. Congratulations, the Slice, Dice, and Spice. Come on up.
And Cheryl Lee, do you want to hear a quote?
Yes, Cheryl.
Wait, 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 wait. Hey, hey.
Let's turn this way, guys. The cameras can see you.
Yeah. I didn't get a picture.
Oh, okay.
We'll turn back around for you.
And BTC culinary arts teacher Cheryl is here as well, who does an incredible job with these students, and we thank you, Cheryl, for your dedication and inspiration, for sure.
Any?
Thank you, students and staff, Burlington School District staff and students and families. Next on the agenda is the chair's report. This month, we would like to highlight our school nurses who are here tonight to share with us. If they could come up and introduce themselves at the public comment table, that would be great. Welcome.
If it's okay, can I stand?
Yes.
Sorry. My name's Speck McRae, and I am the school nurse at Edmonds Middle School. This is Jess Bound from the high school, and this is Louise Munjin from the Integrated Arts Academy, and we are all school nurses. Welcome. So I want to preface our presentation to you by saying, this is filled with tons of sentences and links and information, and no, we are not going to read it all to you, but we really wanted you to come away tonight with a lot of resources about school nursing. So we're gonna give you an overview of what we do, but really, it's a lot more than what we're even gonna tell you tonight. So, here we go. So, so the first thing, on the first slide, it will tell you that school nursing is a specialty of nursing, just like cardiothoracic nursing is a specialty of the hospital, or labor and delivery is a specialty. School nursing is a specialty of nursing, and we wanted you to know that, as well as that it's grounded in evidence-based practice, just like every other area of nursing is, and that the National Association of School Nurses recommends a full-time, baccalaureate-prepared RN, or registered nurse, to serve in a school, as the school nurse. And I also wanted to just let you know that May 8th was the National School Nurse Day, and as a part of that, the, I'm gonna call it NASTIN, which is the National Association of School Nurses, they prepared a slideshow for nurses across the nation to use to advocate and share about school nursing. So some of the information on our slides is directly from their PowerPoint. So, next slide, please. So, as a school nurse, we hold many hats, and we advocate for school safety, for school health, and to improve learning outcomes, and so this just, this is just a bulleted list of all the many roles that we play. We're a healthcare provider, care coordination, we're a school health leader, we also are public health lens, and an emergency responder. Next slide. So this slide is just why is school nursing important, and again, this is one of the slides from NASTIN directly. And chronic health conditions, and those influenced by the social determinants of health, those are the poor, the hungry, the needy, and those social determinants of health are determined by the World Health Organization, and those are growing needs. So chronic needs, chronic health needs, and the social determinants of health are growing needs worldwide. And this has also created a need for more school nurses in schools, and also the change from in hospital pediatrics, where they used to keep kids longer. When you and I were younger, there were larger pediatric wards, and now most of the things that are chronic diseases are handled at home, and therefore the students are in school. So there is a growing need for school nurses as our societal needs change and as those chronic kids are in the community more. So if you could click on that, what do school nurses do? That's a hot link. And this will take you directly to the NASTIN page, and I just wanted you to have this visual, because I feel like visuals do way more than anything I can tell you. And hopefully, the link will work. But it comes up to this page that, these are all the different practice topics that, and as you, if you scroll down, it'll just give you the many different areas that school nursing encompasses. And so these are just a handful of toolkits and different topics that NASTIN provides for school nurses for resources, but I just felt like that was a really good visual, that we do a lot more than head lice, Band-Aids, and vomiting, which a lot of people will be like, what does a school nurse do? They give out Band-Aids. But we do a lot more than that. So that, if you ever have time to go in and click on some of these links, or if you know that certain things are a problem in certain schools, this would be a really great resource for us to use in the district. On our next slide, if you go back to our slideshow, sorry, there's so much clicking. The next slide is the standards that we follow, which is a frameworks, and the, the circle image is a hot link, which you can or can't click on right now, whatever you want to do, but it will show these two images larger, so you can read them. This was a, the standards of practice developed by NASTIN to bring school nurses into the 21st century, and really look at the standards of practice, how you can be a leader in your school, how you can tie links with the community, how you're case managing, different health needs. And so under each of those five columns are a whole list of things within each of those categories that the school nurse does daily. And so that's a lot. I'm not gonna read it to you. On our next slide is the whole school, whole community, whole child model, and we just wanted you to know that we do follow this model, and that red writing is also a hot link to the Vermont Department of Health, which gives you a little bit of background about that model. But our point in this is that we are treating the whole child. We're treating mental health, environmental health, physical health, spiritual health. The whole child is what we are aiming at in our daily practice. Our next slide is nursing interventions. So these are specific nursing tasks that we are in charge of at school, if there are students in our school that need device adjustments, or G-tube feeds, or IV care, infusion site care. This is a whole list of all the different things that school nurses are trained in and would have to monitor and care for at school. The next slide is not nursing tasks, but other nursing duties outside of those specific hands-on tasks, and include different things like meetings, and educating caregivers, and educating the staff in doing our moments of time, which is how we get our Medicaid funding. So for those of you who aren't familiar, the moment of time is an email that we get in actual time, and it's a survey that we have to take in that time period, saying, what are you doing right now? Are you providing direct care with a child? Are you on the phone with a parent? Are you in a meeting? And there's a long list of different options that we can choose from, but that's how we get our Medicaid funding, is by the answers we give and in real-time data. So that's a really big thing that we do, and it's like a tiny little amount of our time, but it makes a big impact on the monies that we get as a district to help provide SAT counselors and provide financial stability for the dental clinic and all the other, the others of health. So our next slide is, we just wanted you to know that bachelor-level RNs get public health and pediatrics as part of their undergrad nursing education, and the American Nursing Association is, publishes the standards of nursing, which all nurses follow, like every nurse in the world will follow, not in the world, in America, will follow the American Nursing Association Standards of Care. And in 2017, they published for the first time standard number eight, which is being culturally competent. And so this is something that a bachelor-level or higher nurse will already be educated in, and given our cultural diversity within Burlington, this is something that I think we do really well, and we all wanted to highlight that cultural competency is really important to this district, and it's also very important to public health and being, having healthcare access for anyone of any color, creed, nation. I probably missed age. So these are, I just highlighted some of the things that we do on a daily basis in our district that coincide with this standard from the ANA. The next slide, we're gonna get a little bit deeper into what is our value add. So Massachusetts did a state study on school nursing and what they actually financially give to a school district. And a school nurse in a building saves a principal almost an hour a day, saves teachers almost 20 minutes each a day, and saves clerical staff over 45 minutes a day. And when you add up all those people in one building over that day, that's how many minutes having a school nurse saves a day. We also, having us in the building increases school attendance, which we'll see in the numbers, we'll show you a little later in this presentation, and we also prevent the spread of communicable diseases by knowing who is vaccinated, who is not. So we're gonna dive into Burlington specifically now. So here's a list of all of our school nurses in our district, and the letters after our names stand for the degrees that we have. The RN, obviously, is registered nurse, and then the NCSN are the nationally certified school nurses. So every nursing specialty has an exam that you can take on a national level to become nationally certified, and school nursing, because it's a specialty, has that same exam. If you go to the next slide, it tells us a little bit more data about our school nurses and in comparison to the national percentage of school nurses and who is an RN nationally. So the school district, we have 41.7% have master's degrees in comparison to nationally, school nurses have, it's 12.5%, so we're doing really well there. And RNs completely, not just school nurses, about 10% hold master's degrees. So I think that says a lot about the quality of care that we give our children, and that this is an important factor in our student health. But the bachelor's degrees in Burlington schools, 58.3%, as compared to school nurses nationally, 51.3%. And this is really the direction that the whole nation is going toward, having a bachelor's prepared nurse in every building. And I just want to highlight that we do have two nationally certified nurses. And this graph on the right, I love this graph. This is my favorite part of the whole presentation. It shows our specialty areas outside of school nursing. And so I know you probably can't read that, but geriatrics, children with special needs, psychiatry, acute care, cardiothoracic nurse educator, adult medicine, obstetrics, labor and delivery, pediatrics, oncology, hematology, intensive care, OR, PACU, MedSurge, emergency geriatrics, camp nursing, cardiology, open-heart surgery, public health, neonatal intensive care unit, and post-anesthesia care. Like, that is a whole hospital. Like, I think that's pretty cool. When you think about, we have 12 nurses in the district, and those are all of our specialties before we were even school nurses. The next slide is showing our school nursing care across the continuum of K through 12. The green parts are what we do at every level. We are keeping kids healthy and ready to learn. We are, I can't read that, reviewing student records to, for required immunizations, and we are screening as needed or as requested by doctors, staff, and parents for vision and hearing. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Louise and Jess, and they can talk about the elementary and the high school level, and I'm in the middle of those two spectrums.
Hello. Basically, the elementary level for immunizations, we, the kids have all the primaries, we need to make sure when they come in that they've had everything, so it's a lot of time to be able to assess that, knowing, and it has to be a nurse who assessed it because of all the different types of vaccines, the combos.
Can you go to the slide before?
Sorry, sorry.
The, yeah.
As far as screening, the, the ones that are not in green are what the state requires us to do. The extras, what's, what's in green. And then continuity of care, we just start trying to do health education when they're young, to move on to the middle and high school, higher level.
The green parts are what we do at every level. We are keeping kids healthy and ready to learn. We are, I can't read that, reviewing student records to, for required immunizations. And we are screening as needed or as requested by doctors, staff, and parents for vision and hearing. I'm going to turn the mic over to Louise and Jess, and they can talk about the elementary and the high school level. And I'm in the middle of those two spectrums.
Hello. Basically, the elementary level for immunizations, we, the kids have all the primaries, we need to make sure when they come in that they've had everything. So it's a lot of time to be able to assess that and knowing, and it has to be a nurse who assessed it because of all the different types of vaccines, the combos.
Can you go to the slide before?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
As far as screening, the, the ones that are not in green are what the state requires us to do. The extras, what's, what's in green. And then continuity of care, we just start trying to do health education when they're young to move on to the middle and high school, higher levels.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Jess, I'm one of the nurses in the BHS health office, and I work with two other nurses, Joanne Lemanek, who's also a part-timer, and our only full-time school nurse at the high school, Maureen Webb. And I guess, you can see that there is a lot of variety to what we do, more than I ever thought there was going to be in school nursing. It's really a holistic type of nursing, which I wasn't expecting when I first started. But I'm just going to speak a little bit, now that I have the mic, about what the difference is at the high school level. And of course, like, across all grades, we're doing nursing assessments using our clinical reasoning and our nursing interventions to provide compassionate care to all of the students and sometimes the staff. And at the high school, it's a little bit different because the, the ages of the students, they're really on the brink of adulthood. Some of them may be adults. We have folks who already have children, adult learners. And so, one big part of the job that I enjoy and I feel compelled to do is to really educate students about accessing health, especially after they, after they leave school, and really kind of bridging that gap for folks and helping them to access community health, but as well as the school-based health center here at the school and the dental clinic. So that's a big part of our job as school nurses, is to encourage that kind of self-advocacy and responsibility for your own health. The types of visits that we have every day are just infinite, different possibilities that could walk through the door, which makes it kind of fun sometimes. It's a lot of problem solving and a lot of detective work sometimes, especially if a student's done a lot of research on their own, online, and have already self-diagnosed. So that's, so that keeps it very interesting. And I have to admit, when I first took the job, I was a little nervous about what it was going to be like to work with the adolescent population. They kind of get some bad press sometimes, but I have to say that I've been really impressed with the resilience and the responsibilities that our students have. They, it's just so much that's going on, and it's really an energizing kind of place to work, to just, and to be, working with students and kind of hearing about their, what their plans are for their future adult selves. So I really love that aspect of it. But what's different about school nursing than nursing that I had done before is that it is a well population for the most part. We do have our acute issues, emergent issues, chronic issues, but for the most part, students are pretty healthy. And so a big part of our job is preventative health. And so some of the ways in the high school that we've tried to promote preventative health is the nurses have organized a health and wellness fair, usually annually, for the students during lunchtimes in the spring. And we've also been working on an Alloxone protocol and making sure that we have Narcan available in the health offices, and getting ourselves trained as well in that area. We also collaborated with students and the staff on condom availability, and we hold a staff flu clinic as well. So I could go on, but that's a lot about the high school. I just wanted to give you a little sneak peek of what goes on here. So pass it back to me.
So we'll go through the next slides real quick, because they're numbers, and you guys can look at them later. So this is the immunization data comparing Burlington to Vermont and to the CDC kindergarten rates. And we're pretty much on par with the state. And like Jess said, we are in a well population, so that's good. The next slide is our raw numbers from our office visits that we talked about. The purple line on the lower part of the screen is our return to class rate for, and it's, it's by, I'm sorry, I can't really read it that well up on the screen, but it's by school. And we've seen 12,422 visits that have been documented and reported this year. And about 87% of those visits have been returned to class. So without a school nurse in the building, it's pretty much guaranteed that 87% that would return to class would probably have gone home. So that's where we do really keep students in the building to access their learning. Whereas if a layperson was making that decision, it would be, just send them home, just call the parent. So, and then if there's no nurse in the building, there's no data captured about any illness or things. Our next slide is really about our, all the other health services that we do well in Burlington and that aren't outside of our offices. So we have, always offer safe, caring, compassionate space for students. We have cultural competency, which I talked about before. The dental clinic is huge, limited school-based health center, so not every school has the school-based health center, but a lot of them do. And then the mental health needs that we have collaborating with Howard Center, and the social work services also with Howard Center. Those are huge and bring a ton of health that we could not offer by ourselves. So that's great. The next slide is what we do well in Burlington. And we really wanted to leave this on a really high-end note because we really are very positive and thankful for what we do well in Burlington. So we have a bachelor's or higher degree nurse in every building every day, which sounds really small, but in other states across the nation, there is one nurse for 3,000 students or for schools that are like three or four hours apart in a radius, that they have to share one school nurse. So that's, that's a huge win for us. We also have the school-based health centers like we talked about, and we follow evidence-based professional specialty practice standards, which those, those are like three home runs for us district-wide. And the last slide, we also, as Jess mentioned, the high school has done some health fairs and organized with other community partners, which is huge for teaching kids how to advocate for their own health once they're outside of the school system as adults. And three of us are on the Vermont State School Nurse Association, which is the board that governs all the school nurses in the state. And we just hosted the New England School Nurse Conference here in Burlington, and the Burlington School District nurses were huge in pulling that event off. And there were 227 school nurses at the Hilton last weekend. So we have a lot to be proud of here in Burlington, and I'm really proud of all of us. I think we do a really great job as a community around health. And is there areas to improve? Absolutely. But where there's growth, there's good stuff. So, thank you so much for your time. There are some resources, they're all hot links to different topics about school nursing. And then our last slide is just a, thanks for listening. Tell everybody about us, and thanks for listening.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioners will go around. Commissioner Curry? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you for coming and sharing with us. My question is, how do you coordinate and collaborate as a team? Do you guys, do you do that, and how do you do that?
I think, so for, I think for the high school, it's a little different because there's more than one of them in a building. But between us and the district, we have a meeting every month that we all come together and talk about stuff. In between, we email, call each other, and we are each other's main support. I'm sure Louise probably gets the most phone calls today, but she's also been doing this a lot longer than all of us, no offense Louise, and she is a wealth of knowledge. And so we do tap each other for, for resource.
And do you all report into the principals of their respective schools, or central?
Our direct supervisor's the principal, and then we, above him is Laura Nugent from Special Services is our administrator.
Commissioner Curry?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to add Louise acts as our head nurse, and so she doesn't have any administrative decision-making power, but she does, like, if Laura and Yao have to make a decision about their nurses, they ask Louise and confer with Louise.
Thanks for that presentation. It was really fascinating. I have two part, two questions. The first one is, I'm just curious about the Medicaid revenues recently compared to prior years, have they changed? And then the second question is just about how much contact you all get to have with the students. You mentioned the health and wellness fair. I was wondering at the high school if you ever get to participate in the YES program or the sports medicine program.
As far, I can't answer to the MAC money right now, but as far as the YES program, unfortunately, no, we have to be there in case people need us for health reasons, because I can think of a lot of things I'd like to do for YES. But no, we stay, and it's actually, is, it's, there's quite a push this time of year from the nurses in the health office at the high school getting ready for YES, because from our perspective, all the students are moving around, and those with known health conditions or bee sting allergies or whatever, teachers need to be notified. There's, there's actually quite a lot of work that we do do around YES, as well as sometimes, you know, get some, we've been able to get some resources from Vermont Department of Health for like tick removal kits for those heading out farming and stuff like that. And we don't get to do that. And no, we don't work in sports medicine either. Hold up one.
As far as the MAC money, from what I understand from Barry's, the numbers are going down, but it's not based just on our numbers. It's now a statewide pool of money, and I think that we're at a disadvantage because we have higher needs, but we're pooled with the other schools who don't have as high a need. So it's not really our fault, per se, it's the system that the state's using.
Thank you so, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, okay. Thank you so much for taking the time, especially putting together your PowerPoint. There were a lot of information there that we can access and learn a little bit more around, and especially the data. I love the data that you shared. I'd be interested in knowing what the, the data is on the students who self-identify their, their pathology when they're just before, just before an exam or a test or something, right? They're probably more, but just wanted people to know that I would think of maybe about two years ago, our nurses were recognized statewide and been recognized nationally for a number of different things. And she's being very sort of shy right now, but Louise has been our, our major lead, and she was the nurse of the year. Was it last year or year before, I think it was? Like that, and as was mentioned, she is our lead nurse, and she coordinates the nurses and brings them together. And yes, when I need to make a decision around nursing, it's Louise that usually is the one that says, "This is what we need to do." And I say, "Yes, this is what we need to do." So thank you Louise, and thank you nurses, and we appreciate the service they give our students every day.
Commissioner Roach?
Thanks, thank you for that presentation. And I found it interesting that some of you, you're in the past, that your specialty was geriatric care, because your current positions are quite opposite from that. And I'm also impressed that every nurse at every school has a bachelor's degree, because I know to be an RN, you don't have to have a bachelor's degree. So, so that's great. And I don't know if people know this, but we're going to miss Louise at IAA because she's actually retiring at the end of the school year, and hopefully her knowledge stays. I must say that I got some personal help. I was really impressed Louise did some research on head lice, and hopefully that knowledge transpires, stays, because I found it very helpful. And I know probably everyone's child here at the table has been affected by that. Thank you.
President Carey?
Yeah, thank you very much for that presentation. Can you hear me? And it's certainly full of information that's fascinating about what you do every day, but I know, I think you're de-emphasizing the, the role that you play in each school, the important role that you play at each school for kids who are seeking nurturing and psychological support. And I know they get it from the nurse, and I know that is a huge part of your job, and I just want to thank you for that and being so wonderful at providing that very basic and important need in all of our schools. And then I, I was going to, you know, ask if Louise is retiring, and she is, and I'm wondering if she's on, going to be on call next year.
We've already told she has to.
Right. And then I was wondering about the, you know, in the news is the measles outbreak everywhere. And it looks like our immunization rate is kind of protecting the schools from that. Is that what the situation is right now in Burlington?
Yes, the, the number is 95% considered for having good herd immunity. At this point, Vermont does not have any cases of measles, but I expect we will because we're just at 95.3%. We're at a threshold that we could have an epidemic here too.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want anyone to get too relaxed about that. It's good to vaccinate.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the entire board, thank you for your care, as was stated, and your expertise, and your presentation was incredibly professional and well-received. So thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We'll move to financial, routine financial reports.
I think we just approved the whole thing as amended.
Yeah, so amended.
We don't even talk about it.
Great. We're going to pull.
It's already pulled, so just say.
All those in favor.
Move to, approve the consent agenda.
Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Is there a second? As amended. Second, Commissioner Sowers. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Any abstention? Okay, the motion carries. Now let's move to student representative report. Commissioner, Student Rep Isaac Geneman?
Great. So next Monday, May 20th, the BHS community is participating in BHS Unplugged. It's related to the National Day of Unplugging, and this event highlights the value of disconnecting from digital, digital devices to connect with ourselves and our community, as well as raise awareness for the amount of time each day that we spend on our screens. Around BHS right now, there are posters, such as this one right here, created by students, faculty, and staff with the reason that they choose to unplug. Mine is "Think and Recollect" for those that can't read out in the big audience we have tonight. And so, make sure to check those out as you head out of the building tonight. And next Monday is BHS Unplug.
Thank you, Isaac. Next on the agenda will be the committee reports. First up is the community engagement. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair. Well, the community engagement committee met within the last month, and a lot of discussion around IAA, and we've handled that discussion in multiple venues. The other thing I wanted to mention was around the communication, board communication guidelines. I encourage my colleagues to review those if you haven't, especially around the open meeting laws. It's important that any deliberation that we do as a full board is not done via email. And then I have to figure out where to post those officially, in the right place, but I'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Next is personnel and curriculum. Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Allwell?
Okay, we had a meeting on April 4th that was focused on special ed, and I won't go through the entire list of information that we have there, but Laura was extremely informative, and her knowledge is comprehensive and profound in terms of special ed needs in the district and the way they're delivered. I will point out a few things. You can look, you can look at the 13 categories of special ed needs and BSD and the minutes. You could look at the cost of independent school placement, which is incredible. Just for your information, Vermont has the highest identified emotional behavioral disability needs per capita in the nation. The movement that the board has made in terms of increasing some personnel is a good move in the right direction, but it's really, as was quoted at the meeting, it was just a drop on a hot stove. I kind of like that image. There's, we talked a lot about, Laura talked a lot about how special ed is funded, and it's, it's local, it's state, and it's federal funding. It's a very complicated information that I tried to outline for you to give you a general overview of where it comes from and how the needs are met financially in Burlington. Some information about, for you to consider is that, you know, the reality is the courts continue to broaden the definition of our obligation while the state and federal government continues to reduce funding. And that's the, that's the reality of what's happening now. the definition of our obligation, while the state and federal government continues to reduce funding. And that's the, that's the reality of what's happening now, and it's been going on for many years, as we all know. But I just want to emphasize that, because that was part of our discussion as well. We are in Burlington under identifying our English language learning students, because it's hard to, to test them when they don't have the competency and the language that they need. And then we talked quite a bit about the District Management Council, the DMC, proposal that I think is coming forth for discussion tonight. And the cost is listed under, under item C, to the tune of a half a million dollars over the next three years. Laura, both Laura and Stephanie very much support this movement, especially for the systems audit aspect of the program. There were some other specific questions that we had going into the meeting that are answered at the end of the minute, so you can look at them for yourself. And that's about, that's a quick summary of that meeting of April fourth.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
Kathy, anything?
No. I was just thinking we were going to give a report about last night, but that's all right. We'll do it when, when.
Next on the agenda is policy governance, Commissioner Wick.
I'll save my comments for later on this evening in the policy provision.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, finance and facilities, Commissioner Pillsbury.
Finance and facilities met with the, uh, with the architectural design committee and with a majority of the staff here at Burlington High School last Wednesday morning at quarter to eight, for about an hour, explaining it, our latest design for the high school. This, the teachers were given a package, a packet of, of the latest design, and were asked to come back during, some free time during the day, to talk to the, the architects, give their input, feedback, ideas that they had, something that we might have missed. And there was a con, there was a really good flow throughout the day of, of staff coming through the, um, coming to the auditorium to talk with the, the architects. And that lasted until about quarter to four last Wednesday. We have a summary of that, of all the comments that were made, and we will be going through that at our meeting tomorrow at eight fifty. The staff that were not able to be, be able to attend, we have an attendance sheet to allow us to make sure that they, they also receive packets, get the, to also get the information that the teachers who were present got. We have a list of different groups that we're going to be scheduling tomorrow to go back and talk to them about their specific needs, things we may have missed, things that they'd like to tell us that maybe we haven't already heard, so that we, um, we have a large list, a group of people that we want to see before they leave for the summer. That is what we're working on as far as the Burlington High School project. The facilities committee is also, also met on Thursday evening with, with, um, our Director of Property Services to go over the ten-year plan, and to bring forward some bids to you tonight for your approval for some, summer work in construction at, at Edmunds Middle School, or the Edmunds Complex, and the Hunt Middle School, as well as SA. We also are bringing forward some bids on equipment that will, that will be from the property services, funding or fund balance that we have in order to meet the needs of our district for the next year. And I have significant number of motions, and you have those on your, um, on your agenda that I'm going to make at this point. The, the first motion that I'm making is that the Facilities and Finance Committee recommends the board accept Clark's Truck Center's bid for a property services commercial plow truck in the amount of seventy-six thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars.
Any discussion?
Can, can we have a second?
A second. Commissioner Wick.
Okay. Basically, this, this is the plow truck that we, we, this is the, uh, the truck that we, plow truck that we need in order to make sure that our staff and our, our families are able to get to the school, get to park, to get into the, in and out of the school, and for our children to be able to get safely into our schools. It is, it is an amount of money that we'll be using. We are assured that it's available in, in a fund balance. We are assured by our Director of Finance, so that will, that will be the source of the revenue for this project.
Can you tell me, was that on?
Commissioner Alwell.
Was that part of our, of the budget?
No, this was, this was one of the items that we had a choice to put into the budget, uh, next year, and we, we did not make it. But it is something that we, well, we have a broken truck, we need it. And the, uh, the property services person and the finance director have, have found that we can afford to do this either end of this year or next year, with, with funds that will be available to us.
Commissioner Sowers.
Have we, have we looked into seeing what we could do with the city in order to share resources with the city? Because I know the plowing trucks were something that we had talked about.
I'm gonna let Mr..
Director Spalding.
Yeah.
We have had that ongoing discussion. There, there, we have not come to the conclusion that they're ready or able to, or in, and or interested to take on the plowing needs of the school district.
Unfortunately, we both need to have our, our streets and sidewalks plowed at the same.
Exactly, same time, correct.
All right, then we move to approve the motion.
Do we have a vote?
Yes, so we'll approve the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries. Next, Commissioner Pillsbury.
If I could make a second motion and make an explanation after it's been seconded. The finance, the facilities and finance committee recommends that the board accept Milton Rental Sales and Services bid for the Edmunds tractor in the amount of eighty-three thousand five hundred nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Have a second. Commissioner Rojic.
This is, this, this item is also one that will, will be in sort of the same situation as previous vehicle. It's, it's something that we are, been assured is definitely needed, and we, we don't have this, uh, a tractor that is serviceable at this time, and we're going to need to replace that. And we have an opportunity, according to our Director of Finance, to be able to do that, either at the end of this year or next year. And if we don't have the funds, we will not do it.
Commissioner, Director Spalding.
A little extra detail on that. This tractor would be housed at, at the Edmunds Complex with the, the second phase of the project. We're adding a lot of sidewalks. We used to just have a little walk behind snow blower there that we stored in a little shed. Part of that, um, second phase of that project, we're building a small utility garage that would house this tractor, so that we can maintain it on-site to, to clear snow and not have to bring a vehicle up from property services. I think you can probably hear me without that.
Commissioner Alwell.
Again, was this not one of these things that didn't get on the budget?
This is one of those items that we, we chose to cut out of the budget, and we, we determined whether or not we could purchase it out of this year's funds based on having a, a surplus. So we're, we're gearing ourself up to, because we have to put these items out to bid, to be able to make the purchase in the event we have those available funds out of the budget at the end of the year, at this current year's budget, to make the purchase.
Commissioner Rojic.
Sorry, what does the tractor get used for? And if we store it at Edmunds, but we need it at another location, how are we gonna get it over there?
Well, we could just drive it down the road, but.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we're driving one down the road from property services at two eighty-seven Shelburne Road up to the Edmunds Complex, which isn't very efficient, and it's not very time, you know, it's very time-consuming to be able to clear the sidewalks at, at the site, using a, a little walk behind snow blower as opposed to a, a large tractor that could clear all those sidewalks in a quicker fashion.
So side question, no plowing?
Correct, yes, yes, sorry. Snow plowing, salting, et cetera.
All right. Commissioner Alwell.
I mean, here are two big vehicles that were not put in the budget, and now we're gonna vote on them when there are a thousand other things also that should be paid for out of the extra amount of money that directly affect children. And I guess this bothers me in that this was a discussion point, and it didn't get on the budget, and now it's just coming this way, and we have to, without big discussion or knowing this is coming forward, all of a sudden, these things are, and they're two big items. I mean, it's not small amounts.
There are just as much of a priority when we brought it to you to put on the budget, but you chose not to include it for that next year's budget. So, this is, these are the means and methods that we need, need to do to, to purchase this equipment.
Right, I get that, but it's not, then, we could ask then for social workers, psychologists, teachers to be put this way also, to come through to us without going through the budget.
Commissioner Fisher.
So, I think you make an excellent point, Commissioner Alwell. So I guess I'd ask Superintendent Obang, um, do you support, if we have not approved something in an FY twenty budget, for your district leaders to bring that forward in FY nineteen? And if so, do you have a process to, to manage those, those asks?
Yeah, great question. I think, uh, just some clarification, this is coming through the Finance Facilities Committee. So the committee, the Finance Facilities Committee has had a conversation around the needs, and have determined that this should come to the board. In terms of the budget process, we do have a process, and absolutely right, whatever we vote on is what we should sort of sustain throughout the course of the year. I think the Finance and Facilities Committee has considered these as sort of emergent situations. There's a considerable number of liability pieces for us if we don't have these equipments. This is about safety, and these are one-time purchases. It's not like we want to increase programming or, or whatever, in, in those terms. If we don't approve it, I think then Marty and his staff would be left to try to accommodate the course of the year. And, and what would happen is the next year, probably the same thing. Reason why we had a sixty-five million dollar deferred bond two years ago was this is what happens, right? Because we always err on the side of people, right? But at some point, we have to take care of the facilities in some way, and then the cost increases. So I would say I agree with Commissioner Alwell in terms of we need to try to stick to our budget when we have an approved budget, and that's the budget. But I think the Finance and Facilities Committee probably had a robust conversation around the urgent need for this, and they brought this forward because of that particular need, and considered all the other aspects in terms of liability and safety and pieces in, in those forms. Staff would not routinely bring this, a workaround to, to, to bring it forward, to try to get something on the budget that wasn't approved.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
I understand, Commissioner Alwell's, and I can, they sound like the words I would use. We really did have a robust communication, a robust conversation with, with the finance director, and he assured us that this would be possibly, this would be possible for us to afford. And it's usually a ten-year amount of money, since what we spend on this is usually lasts for ten years. And we were thinking about the health and safety. We're, at Edmunds, we're trying, we're building an accessible drive this summer for our ADA personnel, people to get into the building. We need to be able to get those cleared and cleaned. And so it was, you know, it was not something that we necessarily wanted to do, but something we know we have to do, and to be responsible for our children and for, and for the adults that are going in and out of that building, to make sure that our sidewalks and our, our drives and our parking lots are cleared and cleaned, so that we can have safe accessibility.
Commissioner Rojic.
My question is, how were the, how was the snow cleared this year, and why is that not, no longer a viable option?
It was cleared with a walk behind snow blower, like typical that you'd use in a residential home. We're adding, as Keith said, a number of sidewalks that are going to bring the, the gray directly from Main Street to the front door of C Building, and from the horseshoe also to the front door of C Building. We're eliminating all of those. There's a number of stairs that are currently on the front lawn of Edmunds, so this is gonna be, you know, a much easier way to maintain all of that, those number of sidewalks. We're also adding a sidewalk from the, the back parking lot, which would go out to Maple Street, rather than either by shovel or by a small little walk behind.
Yeah, and I just wanted to know, like, if we make this purchase, are we gonna do it so that the tractor's gonna get stored properly, so it's not gonna be out in the elements?
That is correct, because there's a, there's a new little utility garage being built as part of the Edmunds Phase Two project. Up on the field where, where the current playground is.
I'd like to, thank you. And I'd like to move and respect the work of the Finance and Facility Committee for asking those questions. We talked about trade-in values at this current time to reduce the cost. And as Director Spalding said, the amount of pathways and asphalt that, three times or two and a half times the amount that we're constructing over the summer for this campus requires this machinery. Commissioner Fisher.
Well, I just want to respect the fact that we, we as a board discuss priorities, financial priorities, and we deprioritize these things for FY twenty. We're bringing them forward for nineteen. I want to make sure I understood, this will, these will only be purchased if we have a surplus.
That is correct.
Okay, and who makes the decisions about what we purchase with that, what we do with that surplus?
Well, right now, the, I believe the committee's coming forward to get your support with that, maybe we carry that over as a, as a surplus, as a fund balance, and we've entered into the next year's budget. And I know the guidance that I give to our finance director is, do not look to utilize a surplus on things that will be ongoing, because then we're on the hook for it, for whatever. But if it's like a one-time, we've got a, you know, oh, there's a roof that needs really get fixed, can we pay for it? We've got an extra few thousand bucks, can we do that one time? Then those are things you'd want to bring forward, we can kind of get off, get off the books and move, move forward.
So will the board be seeing, if you're gonna focus on using the surplus for one-time purchases and not ongoing personnel commitments or service commitments? Will the board be seeing those as well?
I'm not sure where in the process that the finance director is in the calculus. I think he's predicting that he's gonna have enough, based on our auditors were just in recently too, that he'll have some leftover funds to do some of these type of things. So I think the committee said, stipulated that if there is dollars left, because he's predicting that. So I'm not sure where in the stage where he'll be. By end of June, he'll probably know exactly what's left over, but then there's a timeline too in terms of what we can spend for this year, and what we'll have to carry over as well too. But that's a question I'll bring back to him, and.
And when, when is the end of the school, the, the financial year?
Uh, June, June thirtieth.
Yeah, June thirtieth, yeah.
Commissioner Walz, okay, after Director Spalding.
That's why the purchases would have to be made prior to June thirtieth. You, you can't determine after June thirtieth that we have these funds available, because then, then there are, you know, surplus funds that would then need to be carried over and/or go to vote.
Commissioner Walz, and then Curry.
I'm not a hundred percent opposed to this, but I am a little confused, because we did discuss what we were gonna do with the surplus during our budget meeting, and this did not get picked. I think you, the, the committee knows more than we know, and it would be great to make this decision with all of that information, stuff about trade-in, stuff about where it's gonna get stored. I'm, I'm sure there's more information that'll be helpful.
So I, I recollect when we made the decision to cut both of these items out of the budget, that we did bring up at that point in time, that one priority could be that if we have surplus funds this year, we cut it out for next year, because we, you had to make some, some cuts. But if we had some surplus funds out of this year's budget, that we could reconsider making those, those purchases now. I, I recollect that as being a conversation when you made the decision to cut those items out for next year.
Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Sowers.
I wonder if we could make a list of all of the projects that, or things that we want to put and use for surplus money, and then decide before June, we could all look at the money we have and the projects that are outstanding. And look at those, because I think then we have a better idea of how much are we putting towards the vehicles, what other projects are we doing with the money, just so that, it's hard to, it's hard to agree to one project at a time instead of looking at the overall picture of the budget, and we see what surplus money we have left. So I propose, can we make a list? Can we agree to make a list? Can we agree to make a list of projects, um, to use the surplus money for?
So Finance? Facilities Superintendent?
And I would suggest that, um, before you even engage in that conversation, that you have the Finance Director present, because I think he'd probably be able to share some information that would help you, uh, give you some limitations of parameters of what we, what we can and what we cannot do, because they may not be. And, uh, to bring you back to our budget conversation, we did have, um, a number of things that we prioritized and we did go to the, uh, multi-year sort of strategy. We said the things that weren't supported, we're going to bring over to next year and try to support them. So when we do in our budget for next year, we're going to bring those things back for review. Some of them might fall off, because by then you might think, okay, it's not. And these facility pieces, I know were things that were still, that were on there in terms of being addressed. So if it's not addressed this year, then it's going to be addressed next year. So if we have an opportunity to help us, uh, mitigate the amount of spending for next year, um, we'll do that. But I do think that you need the, uh, conversation with the Finance Director, because I think he might illuminate some parameters and probably give you some ahaz, oh, that's why we can't do that, or that's why we can't, we can't do this. And that would be, that would help in terms of, um, putting something forward.
Connecting the fiscal responsibility to the, you know, budget.
Maybe it starts, I don't know, when your next, your next meeting might be before our meeting. If you engage the Finance Director at that meeting, then something could come to the...
Next Tuesday.
And something could come to the board, um, to have that conversation at some point or something, right?
Yep, I think that's an effective next step. Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Um, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I was having a summer thought as Commissioner Sowers and I echo that thought that in, in May or the end of the year, there, there could be kind of like a, a budget adjustment that the Finance Committee could propose with, with the backup. I do want to point out in the, our policies that staff does have the discretion to make purchases under $25,000 without board approval, um, and that the Superintendent can't spend surplus revenues without board approval, so those are in our policies if people want to look again.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. All right. We like, I move to...
Are we going to vote or?
Yes.
Yep.
Or you could remove your motion.
So, point of order, we have a motion on the floor for the second, for the, what is it?
Tractor.
Tractor, Edmunds tractor, right?
Yes. We had a, we had a motion and a second.
So, so I move to table that and send it back to committee?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Walz? That motion?
What's the required vote on a table?
Liz?
I think it's just a majority to table.
Let's see, so you can win.
It's a race.
Table is matter, second needed, debatable no, amendable no, two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay.
Okay.
Temporarily.
All right, so we had a motion to table. Commissioner Fisher, who was the second?
This one.
Walz was the second.
Suppose temporarily or lay on table, movey table, this is Joe, but I don't know. Second, yes, debatable no, amendable no, but then it says majority.
This is a second.
Suppose to a definite time, majority, the only thing that's two-thirds.
Well, that's interesting, yeah. Yours says majority and mine says two-thirds.
Where's that one from?
I don't know.
Don't know, okay.
So we'll go to, with Joe's?
You tell me. Okay. Let's see how the vote goes.
Okay.
All right. All right, so all those in favor of tabling the motion, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
Nay, I mean, I am opposed.
Tabling the motion.
Shall we count?
Let me do it.
Roll call?
Yes, a roll call. Tabling the motion. So Commissioner Gorman to table.
Aye.
Commissioner Allwell. Commissioner Sowers?
Aye.
Commissioner Pillsbury?
No.
Uh, yes, I don't know. Carrie?
Aye.
Pillsbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Avantich?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Wick?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Curry?
Nay.
Commissioner Walz?
Aye.
Seven to three. Seven, three, so that is two-thirds and a majority. Is that correct? I think so. I think, yeah, motion carries. Yeah.
One, two, three, four, okay. Motion carries, thank you. So we will table that. And next, Commissioner Pillsbury?
Okay, I need to, uh, the motion has been changed due to the fact that, um, we did some further investigation into the, uh, into this project. This is, this is in next year's budget for the property services. This is next year's budget out of property services, okay? And we're, we're changing the, uh, the vendor to CB seating, because their bleachers are more appropriate for what we need at Hunt. And the amount of money does go up, um, about, so those are the two things you want to listen for when I make this motion. The finance, the Facilities and Finance Committee recommends that the board accept CB seating bid for Hunt Middle School bleachers in the amount of $32,700.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Curry? Any discussion?
This will be started in the fall, I believe this project will be started in the fall. Yeah.
So the ch-
Commissioner Curry?
The change is just the, um, the vendor.
The vendor, CPC seating, uh, and the amount is, is not as listed there, it's $32,700.
So we'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, thank you.
Okay.
Next, Commissioner Pillsbury?
This is part of the property services budget for next year, which will be done this summer. And we have a change in, uh, the vendor. It's going to be Parker excavation. Oh, it's right there, good, we got it changed, okay. But the amount is changing, the amount is changing, uh, and so listen for that, okay? The Facilities and Finance Committee recommends the board accept Parker evacuation's bid for a sidewalk improvement on the east side of Sustainability at Barnes for $30,934,
Thank you. Second? Commissioner Sowers? Any discussion?
We are basically replacing the, the sidewalk on the east side that's sort of falling apart with a cement sidewalk.
I just have a question. I guess I don't know at what part the city's responsible for fixing the sidewalk.
This is on the side of the school, Monica.
On school property.
It's on school property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury, next.
This is part of our 10-year capital plan. This is the summer project that we're doing at Hunt Middle School. The Facilities and Finance Committee recommends that the board accept Munson Earth Movings bid for the Hunt Middle School paving project in the amount of $624,987.
Do I have a second? Commissioner All, Commissioner Curry, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
Okay. This is part of the 10-year capital plan, Phase Two at Edmunds. It's basically what we're doing is making ADA accessible by, uh, creating a drive that brings them up to the beginning, to the front of the building. And we have, uh, visitors, uh, we have, uh, disabled parking, uh, in front of the building. The Facilities and Finance Committee recommends the board accept Wright &amp; Morrissey's Incorporated's bid for Phase Two of the Edmunds Project, Edmunds Elementary and Middle School Site Improvement in two, in summer 2019 in the amount of $2,443,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Curry? Any discussion? Commissioner Wick?
Um, just because of the size of this one, I'd just like to hear briefly from Director Spalding, a little bit about this to ensure that you're comfortable with it and it's been fully vetted and all that.
So, a- as you are aware, this is the second phase of the project that, that we have currently happening at Edmunds, where we are renovating C Building. We just put a new cafeteria in the basement level and a new, uh, kitchen down there, so we're converting where the existing kitchen was on the main floor to, uh, like an administrative area, which would be the visitor sign-in. We're going to, we're going to utilize C Building as the primary entrance for the entire campus rather than having, uh, you know, some people come to the elementary school and other people come to the, the middle school to make that campus more of a secure, uh, facility throughout the day. C Building's going to be the primary entrance where visitors would go sign in. It's also, we're also building a new wellness center there, so that would be a central location for, for both nurses, so a parent would, uh, use that C Building entrance to go, you know, pick up a sick kid, sick child or whatnot. So as you're also probably very well aware of that, C Building has a big, big stairwell at the front entrance. We're bringing the grade directly up to the front door, um, and making those grades, grades ADA compliant, all with a sidewalk all the way to Main Street. Uh, we're also bringing another sidewalk that'll wrap around to the, to the existing Horseshoe. That Horseshoe design, um, uh, drive will remain, um, in the same configuration, however, we're re, re, um, replacing the, the sub-bass in all-new asphalt and whatnot, as well as new sidewalks and curving and whatnot there as well. There's a number of retaining walls that are going to hold those very, you know, steep grades, we're bringing up to the front entrance. And we're also, as I mentioned, eliminating those current stairwells, which are a maintenance night, nightmare to maintain on the front entrance there as well. We're also doing some additional work in the back parking lot. There's an asphalt sidewalk that goes from the back of the B Building, which is the, um, elementary school, all the way to Maple Street. Uh, we're replacing that to be, you know, a, a concrete sidewalk versus an asphalt sidewalk with a concrete curb. So, um, as I mentioned, this is an extension to the current project. It, there's, it's a fair amount of work that we're going to cram into the, to the small window of, of schedule that we have to do some, uh, work through the summer. We anticipate that we'll be wrapping up some of the site work even as, as students return, but, um, we'll be completing it, you know, before, before the winter season. The low bidder is Wright &amp; Morrissey, they're the contractors that are on the current phase. This was a process that we went through to get, uh, three contractors to be, they had to be pre-qualified, given that the price was excessive of $500,000. It's unfortunate that the other two, uh, contractors did not submit a bid. I think they probably felt, given that, that Wright &amp; Morrissey's already on that, uh, project, that they probably, uh, had enough inside knowledge to, to provide the, the most, uh, best bid for the district. So, so, um, that's pretty much...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner?
Uh, so, thank you, Director Spalding. Uh, two questions. Number one, will there be, is this the final phase or are there future phases for the Edmunds Campus?
There are definitely future phases for the Edmunds Campus that are, um, different upgrades than this C Building and site improvements. The, the, the phases that will need to be still addressed at Edmunds are an upgrade of mechanical system.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so my second question is, um, there was a design at one point for a vehicular access across the campus. This does not include that, correct?
This does not include that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry? Um, how did the bids come in compared to your budget?
Slightly high, because it was one person bidding and the number of work that is currently out there, given the her, the current market, they were higher than anticipated. We have met with the contractor since receiving these bids and we have identified a number of VE, uh, items. Those are value engineering items that we're going to, uh, look at to, to reduce this overall cost. We think we can get this cost actually down to about $2 million, which is much more in line with the budget.
Great question.
Those value engineering items would be, would be treated like a change order, like a change order deduct. We would still have to bid this base, this base bid that was submitted.
Yeah, and it seems like the construction cost pressures are getting particularly intense.
They're very intense.
So we'll probably want to maybe consider that in budgets next year.
Thank you, Director Spalding, for being here and explaining that.
Um, concerning the budget, I guess I'm just curious, how much of the, it's a $10 million bond? Like, how much of that have we already spent?
Um, well, the first phase of this project cost roughly $5 million and that's really the only project that we've started. And it, it's not a $10 million bond, it's, it's a third, technically a $39 million bond, of which we had, already had approval to get $2 million per year and then we got an additional 19 on top of that, but it's 39 total. And so far, we've, we've only spent, uh, roughly five.
Okay. And Phase One is almost done?
Uh, actually Phase One, if, even if we weren't doing the second phase, Phase One wouldn't be completed until the end of summer.
All right, I move to vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. And I think that captures all of the motions. Thanks for your work and thanks, Director Spalding, for all the...
Thank you.
...advanced documentation that was on Board Docs and your presentation. We'll move on to, uh, DE and I Committee. Commissioner Avantich and Curry?
So our committee meeting was on April 16th, seems like quite a while ago. And, uh, we had Nancy Stetson visit us, um, who was the data manager from Burlington Police Department, um, and explained the data capturing process that the police department goes through. Uh, there's some federally mandated reports that they need to do. Uh, number one is arrests by race, um, and juveniles are, uh, under the age of 20 between September and June. Um, and then number two, referrals to law enforcement by school that happen on school grounds. And I believe to date, this school year, we've had 178 incidents and we might see something about that in the superintendent report. Um, and then there's a couple things that need to be ironed out between, uh, the district and the Burlington Police Department in terms of data tracking. So I believe Nancy Sparks and Karen are going to get together for that. Um, and then, uh, we, we talked a little bit about bullying incidents that could be classified as misconduct and got some explanation from Sparks about that. Um, we have code, codes of conduct in the school district, um, but they vary across schools and we would like to, Sparks at least, would like to make these more uniform. And he would also like to see more policies supporting restorative practices in our district.
Um, so just to clarify a couple things, the, um, we've been talking a lot about data this year and a couple, two things that have come up, as Commissioner Avantich mentioned, the, um, there's a lot of incidents that people call bullying that doesn't meet the standard of the law and doesn't get investigated, but it's causing the, um, like, it's causing disruption in the, in both middle schools. Families are leaving the district, leaving the school. So it's been particularly, we went into this year hearing about it and we came out of the year, kind of trying to understand it better and look at what kind of data set we could create. And so we're really looking forward to Karen Vogel coming to our committee to talk about data, since it's all being kind of re-approached based on a lot of factors. When, um, so the, when, we've been talking about the SRO, we have a memorandum, Understanding with the Police for School Resource Offices, Officers, and then they have a data person who tracks the SRO data. Incidents are positive or negative, they just mean interaction between the SRO and the students for various reasons. There's been 33 arrests and those are when there's weapons or violence involved. So the 178 is really, could be, the SROs are having a nice conversation with a kid and getting to know them, a relationship-building thing. Um, and, and the, um, police department is going to... And the police department is going to work with Karen and Sparks to kind of capture the more specific data that the MOU has been trying to address for a number of years. So, that was a big focus. The other thing is, the DE and I Committee is responsible for assuring that the board complies with our policy to have two implicit bias trainings each year. So, we've been soliciting proposals from trainers to recommend for our second implicit bias training of this kind of fiscal year, I guess. So, hopefully, we'll have something soon to bring forward. I don't know that we'll get more than one proposal. It's been hard, but it should be coming soon.
Thank you, Ron. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
So, your first item is the 1.1 monitoring report, reducing disparities. And I'm going to, I've got Detective Director Phillips and her team. Which one do you want up?
You can just put the report up briefly and then you have the slides as well.
Yeah.
So, I have...
Welcome.
Thanks.
I think you just put it on.
Sorry. Test it.
Hello? Okay, good. So, thanks. I have Victor Prusak and Karen Vogel joining me as part of the team that helped in putting together the information for this monitoring report. So, I know you've all seen the monitoring report. I just wanted to speak to a couple of items in here and then we have a PowerPoint to highlight in more detail some of those pieces. Specifically, I just wanted to reference that when we were here a year ago for this monitoring report, some of the pieces that we talked about which are reflected in the links that we have supplied in the document, we spoke when we were here a year ago about some of the things we were gonna do around reducing disparities as it connects to closing the achievement gap. And so, just a few of those which include our plan to have instructional coaching that focuses on supporting teachers with tier-one instruction. We also talked about the need for professional learning for our administrative teams specifically as it relates to supervision and evaluation of teachers. A better system for using data on a regular basis. So, those were also some things that we highlighted. We have been fortunate to have the instructional coaches this year as well as some consultants that have helped us support our principals with their supervision and evaluation skills. We're continuing to do that work right through the summer and continuing into next year as we look at both the supervision and evaluation model as well as some of the more informal observations in our walkthrough process. We've also had the, we've also been fortunate this year to have Karen and Victor in new roles to really support us both in thinking about our systems for collecting data and helping us with protocols and processes so that we, as an organization, can be more reflective of the data we collect and use that in ways to make more decisions. So, those are just a few highlights and I know you have the report to review. If we can switch to the slides. We have the slides that we'll go through and Karen and Victor will speak to some of these as well. Just to go along with the report to give you a little bit of information about the work we've been doing, we started off the slides. For those of you that were here last year, we continued to bring forward those initial slides that really just speak to our commitment around multi-tiered systems of support which we know is important when we think about reducing those disparities and closing the achievement gap. Who's running the...
I got it.
You are? Okay. We'll tell you...
Tell them what to do.
Okay. We'll tell you what to do. Okay, stop here. Victor, do you want to...
[laughing] I'm thinking on this.
Try that one.
I just do not touch. I always wanna pull it towards me even though it says do not touch.
Use this if you need it.
You wanna use this one? Pass. Price is right.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I just wanna, so, a couple things here. The last time this report was given, I believe it was December of 2017. And so, I'm just curious, who was not on the board then? And the reason I'm asking is there's, some of the stuff is redundant, right? And so, for those of you who were on the board, it's gonna be familiar, but we, Karen and I and Stephanie and Yao talked about this, there's some stuff up there that is really important because this is sort of our focus of where we're moving forward as a district. And with new board members, it makes sense to go over that stuff, not just touch on those things that are from the past year. Does that make sense? Okay. So, again, if you were on the board or you were paying careful attention a year and a half ago and were on the board, yes, you're seeing some things that were there before, actual slides even that we're repeating. So, we, two and a half years ago, I think around, a group of educators, K through 12 from the district, including administrators, went down to do a week-long workshop at Harvard. It's a national workshop around closing the achievement gap. And that really was an eye-opener for those of us that went and we brought back a lot of ideas, but really a lot of energy and conversation at the district level with our colleagues. And from there, we really honed a focus on how do we look at the inequalities that exist in our district? We're doing a great job in a lot of ways, but there's always room for growth regardless of how kids are performing in different schools. And how do we want to focus that energy? And so, we have a video clip there. It's four and a half minutes long, "The Root of Inequality," that we felt is important to play again. And it does have audio, so I don't know how that's gonna work. Jeff.
Maybe give us back the mic.
I don't think it's plugged in.
Educational inequality is probably more than anything else, the fundamental root of broader inequality. If we look at inequality in access to particular careers, inequality in income and wealth, inequality in the nature of political participation, all those things are mitigated by equalizing the skills that education produces, not only the academic skills, but the dispositions, the frames of minds, the conscientiousness, the diligence, the sense of agency. And so, I think there is nothing more important we can do to produce the type of society we want than to raise outcomes in field of education so that knowing somebody's race or ethnicity tells you nothing at all about what their test scores or grades or occupation might be. Boston is a place where I think we are a national leader on many educational fronts, but the story is really that we're not doing everything that we want to be doing. We aren't delivering on all the outcomes that we want to deliver and it's really an educational equity issue. So, we do see the disparities by gender and by race in educational outcomes in Boston and we're really going to get to four all results, which is where Boston wants to get to be targeted on educational equity issues. There's not just one challenge with basic achievement gaps. Even if we just talk about racial achievement gaps, we have students of color in high-income suburban districts that are lagging, they're white classmates. We have inner-city school districts that are high poverty, have a difficult time attracting teachers. So, the work that needs to happen is to figure out how in each of these contexts, we can make the changes that are necessary to produce the excellence to which we aspire. There are needs that kids in inner cities have that people in upper-income suburbs never even imagine, but the most effective schools and teachers in the inner city adapt to those needs. They meet the kids where they are, they establish person environment fit for these kids as they pass to the school. And if we can do that at some greater scale, it truly is plausible that we can have much less poverty in the next generation and that we can have the society with regard to race that we want in the future.
Achievement gaps by race, gender, and socioeconomic status are stark in the national data by the age of two. So, we can't wait till school starts. There's an initiative we just launched in Boston called the Boston Basics where we've got five basic ideas on early childhood parenting, five propositions that we want everybody in the city to know. We're saturating the city with what young parents and young children need to know in order that their kids don't fall behind by the age of two.
It's not just about giving information, it's about building that niche of social support around them so that they know that the grandparents and relatives and the minister and the barber all know this is important and that they are being supported to do these things.
You can do it with materials that are already in the house and there's nothing in here that is particularly in particular racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic group. This is human stuff. This is stuff that everybody in the community can benefit from.
Second thing that excites me this day is the youth culture piece of it. Schools have two curriculums. They have the curriculum that the teachers teach and the ones that kids teach. Part of what we're picking up is a lot of the misbehavior are instances where kids are doing things they don't even want to do, they're just trying to fit in. And so, the idea of intervening into the youth culture and helping kids to develop the culture they really want in their school, they've already got the right values. They don't have the social opportunities to develop that stuff.
You just have to like help students want to help each other.
But it takes student leadership to give people permission even to say what they would think is cool. Are you a student leader?
I try.
You try to be. How plausible is it that you could organize a project at the school where you would get students to talk honestly about the way they really want to be, if you could, and you tell your stories, even to other people from other classes? There's no choice but to try to make the things happen that we don't need to happen 'cause it's too scary what would happen if they don't happen. These days are so reminiscent of the 60s and early 70s. All of those issues are coming back. There was a period where you thought we'd gotten over that, but there are enough instances where people have produced lots of progress in inner-city schools to think that if we really want to do it, if we really have the political will to make it happen, we can't 'cause it's our generational responsibility to work on it no matter whether we're optimistic or pessimistic.
Oh. I don't know what the next video is. That could be interesting.
You want to back your slides in?
Yes, please.
Oh, there you go. Great. Let me just go down to where we were. Karen and I are laughing over here 'cause we really wanted a clicker that we could just do this ourselves.
We're used to being in control.
This is hard.
Keep going.
Right there. Okay. So, that was Ron Ferguson. Ron Ferguson is the director of that Achievement Gap Institute that they have at Harvard. So, he sort of was with us for that whole week. His background, just so you know, he's a PhD in economics from MIT. Economists by their nature tend to be fairly conservative. And so, he definitely talks about some things that I may feel don't feel as progressive as I would like in education and what I'm attracted to, but at the same time, he's really focused on what we all want, which is that we want our kids to graduate from high school with the skills that they need to be able to have options and go enter the world of work or higher education. And he recognizes that right now, that there's this enormous gap that exists. We're not gonna show you some of his other stuff, but he talks about that it's not just looking at students who are not meeting standards, it's also increasing achievement for those kids who are meeting standards and exceeding standards, that there's always growth that we can be doing with our students and improving teaching and learning. And so, the three things that I just want to pull out before I go to this directly is that thing, Boston Basics, so that's really thinking about birth to five. And this board has talked about that and the city's talking about that. And Karen and I met with the mayor and some of his key people to share a version of this presentation with him and talked to him about this idea of what can we be doing other than just his pre-K initiative that he has and that zero-to-three initiative that he's rolling out, but how could really touch families in the district? And he's open to that idea of partnering with us as a district 'cause we can't do that ourselves, right? Our job is to start with our kiddos at age three and most of our energies really are when they start kindergarten. So, we need the city as a partner. The other piece is that youth culture piece that he touched on. If you think about our investment in restorative practices, some of the stuff that Monica talked about with the police department and those pieces there, you know, recognizing that that's the right way to go. So, I think about our advisories that we're working on, talking about relationships between adults and students, students and students, adults and adults. That aligns really well with that work that Ron Ferguson was talking about. And then the last piece is about effective instruction. And so, that's that tier-one piece. And I know this board has been really focused on how do we invest in our teachers who are delivering that instruction every day? And that's that third piece of that with the recognition that there's always room for improvement, there's room for professional development. And so, we're really working on how do we, and this is, leads right into this slide up here, how do we have a rigorous, standards-aligned curriculum? How do we make sure we attract high-quality teachers? But also, how do we give them the professional development that they need and want? So, how do we think about teachers as adult learners, just like we think of students as your children learning? And thinking about adult learners just like students, if teachers are, have some choice and are engaged at that level, they're really gonna jump in and learn. But if it's a one-size-fits-all approach, just like in a teacher's classroom, we're gonna lose a lot of them. Like, it's just not gonna have the impact. And so, that's where we're moving as well with professional development. And then the last piece is instructional leadership and Stephanie talked about this in the monitoring report around walkthroughs and some work that we're doing with Alice Worth.
Worth.
Yes, Worth, with our principals. Next slide? I think. Oh, sorry. Climate and culture, I mentioned that, and that family-school connection piece. Yeah, so, I'm not gonna read through all that. Karen, is there anything in particular you want to highlight?
There's just a lot on these slides, but...
I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, no, I think, let's see. So, one of the things on here, I think we have this later on in the presentation though, is just about our research and data team, I guess, is what I would talk about here. And we, last year and the year before, we had a research and data team in the district where we looked at district-wide data and we had some important conversations, were able to make some decisions and make some progress. This year, that looks a little bit different because Victor and I have these positions now and so, it's morphed into, you know, we don't have the same type of meetings that we used to have, but we're really meeting with different leadership groups in different schools and system leaders and coaches and interventionists like I talked about when I was here the last time. So, we are keeping a focus on data-driven work in that way. There's a lot to talk about, but a lot of it is also part of, just fits into what you just said on the previous one. So, we can keep going. Let's go, right, so, slide nine, I guess you don't have the numbers on there, is research and data team.
So, one up, one up. Thank you.
Yep. So, we've been meeting with coaches and interventionists, we've created data walls for all the schools, and we're sharing protocols around leading data-driven conversations, facilitating that work in PLCs with teachers, and trying to look for ways that really, this directly affects teachers and students, so, using data in a positive way. Just today, I made a data wall for all of our EL students and shared it with Miriam and we had a really wonderful conversation. We're gonna be rolling that out to all the EL teachers in the district on, that's tomorrow, Wednesday, tomorrow during the PLC time. And they can be doing some strategic planning for next year, getting to know their next year's students and just sitting and really having a rich source of information to work from and thinking about the conversation they'll be able to have tomorrow is exciting to me. So, that's an example of some of the work we've been doing. I talked about the class placement process. process the last time I was here.
Yep.
That's another area of focus this year. So a lot of this is around just getting consistent, communicating, working together, and using data in a positive way.
Do you want to talk about those data points? I don't know if you did the...
Okay, the metrics?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as far as, so this talks about decreasing disparities. And so when we look at our, you know, something like suspension reports or assessments, you know, like the smarter-balanced state assessments, we really look to disaggregate that in ways, like what Ron Ferguson was talking about in the video, right, around income, race, gender, some of those important categories that unfortunately are, continue to be predictive of success in school. So when we, like, we're going to be showing you some slides of disaggregated, smarter-balanced data. And we've really had a focus on, it really matters how you look at the data. You know, what you see when you look at it in different ways really changes. So we've been very intentional about that. We also have the district climate survey, which is, has been, is out there on our website. And we, in the slides, I'll just mention that the annual snapshot, I don't know if you want to speak to this either, Stephanie, but in the slides that we have tonight that have smarter-balanced achievement data on them, that is what, the best we are able to do right now without the AOE having provided their annual snapshot information. And they have a new system and they have ways that they've been working on to give us much richer data where we can look at growth and we can look at things in a much more sophisticated way than in the past. But we don't have it yet. So we did the best we could to give you a little glimpse of some of our data that the AOE has provided. But we're really looking forward to getting more information from them when it's available.
Did you want to mention the field review? I don't know if, how familiar the board is with that.
Sure. So I'll just talk about briefly two items up there. Karen just spoke about the snapshot. Last year, during another presentation, I mentioned to the board that under the Every Student Succeed Act, states are required to do this annual snapshot for districts. And it will include data around how our students are doing on the state tests, so the S-Back test. But it will also include climate survey data, how we're doing on proficiencies and personalized learning. So it's supposed to be a report that really crosses all of the data points from the ed quality standards. And so that's a requirement of states under the Every Student Succeed Act. And the first report in Vermont was supposed to be shared with districts in December of 2018. But there have been some major, major data collection issues at the AOE, which is why Karen alluded to the fact that we even right now have limited data on how our students have done on state tests because there are some real issues with the system. So right now, what we've been told is that snapshot that we originally thought we would get last December, that we may in fact get it this summer, but we don't have, we have no more exact timeline than that. But eventually, when the snapshot's in place, that will be an annual report that will come to the district that we'll be able to share out. And it will have a number of different data points. So we'll be able to really compare year to year in all of those categories. So we're very eager to get that report so that we can really use that internally for our improvement process, but also to build that system of having a snapshot we can look at every year. Just briefly, the other new piece for data collection under the Every Student Succeed Act is something that's called a field review. And basically, what happens is every three years, a committee of practitioners visits your district. The committee is made up of teachers and administrators from other districts in your region, as well as folks from the Agency of Education. And they come and they spend a day and they talk with parents and community members and teachers and students. And there are artifacts that we send in advance so that they walk in knowing a little bit about our school and our systems. And then they spend the day here getting some additional information. And then they write a report. And the report will have, will identify things in each of the categories that they felt that the district was doing really well, and also recommendations. And we should have a final report. So our field review was at the end of March. So we should have a report within the next couple of weeks. So probably something that we can share out in June or at some point this summer. It takes about 10 weeks on average to get the report. So that will be, those field reviews will happen every three years. And there were 20 of us in Burlington School District that were selected to go out and review other districts. And then obviously, we hosted as well. So it's a very interesting process. I think we learned a lot about the things that we feel we can really celebrate and also areas of growth. So that report will come to the district and then to the board as well.
So just some of the transitions from this year that have happened, where we have a lot of new staff and new positions. And Victor and I have these new positions. So it's a new, different year for us. We have a lot of new software that I'm not going to go into. We have our new state reporting. And so we're really moving in a direction of some things changing. And so as far as this next slide with incidents and restorative practices, we're redesigning the way that we look at our incident data and report it and act on it. We're trying to establish some new baselines this year. And what I have in the next slides is some, just some examples of ways that we can start looking at data differently as far as our suspension reports. And so like in this case, we're looking at, you know, the percentage of students in the district who've received one or more suspensions. And, you know, this is something that we haven't really quite looked at the data this way in a visual way. And also looking at it just from this perspective of how many students are we talking about out of our total student population? What we've been doing is looking at, you know, reports from other, like behavior reporting from other parts of the country and other districts, and trying to see what they're doing and trying to just like get out of the box a little bit of the way we've always been doing it. So here are some examples of some new ways to look at this. You can go to the next slide. Yeah.
I was just curious quickly if you, sorry.
Yeah.
Was the 4.64, is that the percent of the total K through 12 population that's been received? Oh, I'm sorry. I completely read the slide.
It's a little hard to see. So it's, and actually, these slides, let me just give you a little more context, too. It's, this is just for this year. And it is year-to-date as of right now. So these aren't really final numbers for the year. It's hard to get all the data in and get it all correct. And there's a process of cleaning things up and coming up with these reports. But what I've done is, as of, you know, the beginning of May, I think it says May 9th on there, I did my best to pull this information and put it into this format so we can see what this is going to look like. And then my plan is to, in the summer, when we really finalize this information for the year, to redo some of these and also some additional ones so that we can really look at the, look back at the year and look at it in some new ways. Does that...
Well, yeah. And this might be answered later on in the slideshow, but is this data compared to past data at some point? And do we have that?
So, yeah, it's a little bit different. We have our, you know, our equity report from the fall, which has several years of suspension data in it. And, but, you know, things have changed a little bit. It's a little hard to compare some of it. So we're trying to think about, okay, let's establish some new baseline data this year. We've also done a lot of work around how we collect data, even the software that we're using. We used to have two different software systems. So we used to have, some of this was getting entered into Power School and some was entered into a separate system called Swiss. We've consolidated those just this year. So there's some new things that we're putting in place, some new kinds of training, a new version of Power School that works differently in the way that this gets collected. So we're trying to kind of go, okay, instead of trying to do something that is consistent with all of that past reporting, we're going to see what we have now and hopefully establish some new baselines.
My question about a suspension is basically the bottom line is if we have violence or some kind of fighting, weapon, and drugs, those are probably, are those the main reasons why students are suspended?
Well, that's a great question. So, you know, we're not going to really get into all the causes tonight.
No, but...
That's not the data I have here. But that is absolutely something that is going to be coming in the future with this information.
I visited Horizons today and I heard that a child came to school with all kinds of marijuana. And there's all kinds of other issues in his life. To send him home is not necessarily a good idea because he's going to maybe not a very comfortable place. But...
Can we stay on...
What?
Can we stay on topic with the presentation?
Well, I could ask a question. Wait till I find my question.
I think a lot of people have questions.
Okay. Commissioner Pillsbury will ask the question.
Okay, let me have my question, please. Thank you. So, okay, so you sent home and that then comes back the next day. That, to me, that's, that's like how you, that's a restorative practice. And I'm concerned about the number of suspensions, but also that maybe some are different than others. So maybe we need to really look deep into how suspensions are recorded.
Yeah, I'm glad you bring that up because that is exactly what we're doing. And I wish Sparks was here right now because he could, you know, eloquently speak to how we're using restorative practices to change the way we deal with discipline in this district and how we want to move away from doing any suspensions and move to a place of having, you know, things in place where we don't have to send a student home. We want to have an alternative setting for students who need that. And so that is absolutely our well-articulated goal, exactly what you're talking about. Yeah.
So a point of clarification, are we doing questions now?
No, we were just doing, yeah, one.
Yeah, I think clarifying questions are totally appropriate. I think if you've got like some probing deep questions, you could write them down.
Let's, I'm going to ask Karen and Victor to finish. And what she's showing you is examples of where we want to go. These are just examples. She's not really the person that does the suspensions or she just plays with the data. And we're looking at different ways of how we can report it and utilize it so we can inform our practice, right? So you're just giving us examples of what you're thinking, how we're going to start to report it and so people can read it easily. And then, so if you can get through that quickly, I know people have lots of questions, so then we can get a chance to...
Right, yeah. We're just going to just quickly glance at this. So it's a few different kinds of charts, the student population versus, okay, so that, sorry, that one is, that's a suspensions by grade level. That's not a way that we have looked at this data really in the past.
Well, no, you can go back to the purple ones there that you had, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because...
Yep.
I mean, so again, without going into the data, this is the kind of thing where one of us, possibly someone else in the district, Sparks potentially, a principal, could take this data, sit down with their staff, and start looking at this and saying, so what is this? This would be the initial macro data, right? That's the whole district. Like, what does that tell us? So we all look at that, six, seven, eight, by the way, if you can't see those numbers. Those are the tall bars there, right? So what does that tell us? We can make all sorts of assumptions just by looking at that. But the one thing that's irrefutable, the largest number of suspensions happened this year in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Middle school.
Yes. Right, yes. So I can tell you that one thing that's thrilling, because this is counter to a lot of the national data, is how few suspensions there were in kindergarten, which is actually a really high, there's high rates of suspension in a lot of urban school districts across the country. So I was thrilled to see that. So anytime we run something like this, there's always this like, oh, I hope I'm seeing something I want to see. But we're prepared to see stuff that we know we need to change, right? We need to make some growth around that.
Right. So we're trying to make this data, I talked about this when I was here last, it needs to be actionable and relevant for people so that when they look at it, they have some ideas about things they can do to change it. And so that's where we're really going with this. This academic achievement data, before we get into it, I just want to preface it by saying that we have data, this is smarter-balanced standardized tests. They get taken in the spring. So this data, the most recent we have is from the spring of 2018. And we have middle school, we have Hunt and Edmunds broken out in here. These are disaggregated by income. And we also have four of the elementary schools. We don't have the two magnet schools in this particular dataset. And I just want to let you know that ahead of time, because of small sample sizes, when we try to disaggregate, we can be violating FERPA laws. And we actually, the state sort of selectively...
On their public side, yeah.
Yeah, publicly, like, withholds, you know, some of this information. So there's not an intention to not show you the magnet schools. We're looking at the magnet school data internally. And Victor and I were just taking a look at this, and it actually is pretty similar as far as the disparities go to these schools. So I just want to put that out there right away. So this first slide is, this is, I know it's so hard to see. I mean, maybe some of you have it in front of you, but it's on the, I can just tell you that the bars on the left are Edmunds Middle School and the bars on the right are Hunt. And what we did is we have sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So we have 2016, 2017, and 2018 scores as these students moved up in grade level. So...
So these guys are ninth grade now.
Right. So this is, everyone here is current ninth graders. And this is three years of scores going back for those students. It's not a true cohort because students come and go, right? So a lot of these students remained the same, but we did have students leave and we did have students come in. I think what the state will end up providing is a way to do a truer cohort when we look at this. So we're excited about that. This shows the disparity between students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and students who do not. So what the bars represent is percent proficient out of that subgroup.
On the ELA.
On, right, I'm sorry, the ELA, smarter balanced. There's so much to say for each slide.
I know.
And so, and then when we get into, that's the elementary school. So the next two slides are, there are two elementary schools represented on each slide, but the format of these slides are the same. Now, this is the math smarter-balanced assessment, same format, percent proficient in the two income subgroups. And for third grade, you know, so these are current sixth graders. So this would have been their third grade score from 2016, fourth grade 2017, fifth grade 2018.
Could you explain why they're not all four on one slide?
[laughing]
No, but we're not trying to...
Right. No, we just, we separated them onto two slides because putting all of that onto one slide is just, whoa, you can't read it, right? We're going for readability here. But that way, it does still allow you, instead of having them all one by one, it lets you do a little comparing visually. So we have disparities. We really need to look at that and use that in our work. That's the gap we're trying to close.
Can I...
Yes.
And I just want to say, a couple principals, prodded by a couple parents in the district, actually took a look at this, these slides. And right away, they wrote us and said, hey, we would love to sit down as a group of principals and really start looking at this data and think about, you know, what's going on there and what are some, ultimately, what are some actionable steps we could take. And so that's what we want. Like, that, we want people to look at this and feel this is valuable. And so just getting that feedback from a couple principals immediately shows that we're on the right track here. Again, if principals look at this and say, this is a waste of time, well, then we're wasting our time. So it's good that we're heading down the right path here.
Thank you, sorry, Karen, Victor, Stephanie. Yeah, I'm really pleased with the change. We're making a really good shift in terms of how we utilize that. And you heard the comments, even when Karen was here a month ago, in terms of the disarray around data from the AOE right down to our own district in terms of how we get data, how we collect that. So I'm really pleased in the direction we're going, where we're going to get usable and actionable data that our principals can use to have informed changes in practice. I would love, I would hope the board would look at this and maybe part of the discussion going forward and maybe in a retreat or something, we're looking at setting priorities that we have some of our data teams come and share with you deeply what's really happening in our schools based on what we have. And that'll help set some groundwork for priorities that you'll set for the next couple of years. And this is, this is a national challenge. Both Victor, Karen, and Stephanie have done some of the work outside of our district with the Harvard Institutes and worked with other districts in terms of what are some of the best practices. And we continue to work with that. And we're also engaged in a deeper learning... And we're also engaged in the deeper learning project, which we're trying to coordinate to connect with our, our data team here moving forward. So there's lots of significant work that needs to happen. We've got a good team we're building here, and we need the, the board to get to the level of understanding, understanding exactly where we're going. So I hope there's an opportunity that we can have a longer conversation, because this, you know, your presentation, but there's more deeper conversations that I think we need to have that'll help you make some good decisions. And before we get to budget time too as well, to make the appropriate allocation. So I share that with you. I know there are probably some questions, but I, I give you this report as, as presented, and for the chair to do as you wish.
I think we'll limit the comments or conversations to one, just because we're, I would like to move on as well to the other items. We have a heavy agenda still with district staff here, so if we open the conversation to commissioners, and then, you know, again, we'll go by the rule of everyone's spoken once, then we'll entertain potentially a second follow-up question. Commissioner Kerry?
I just have a clarifying question about the graphs. And I think you already explained it, but I'd ask you to explain again why SA and IAA are not included in these analyses?
Yep. So in the graphs, I, I have, I don't know, I don't think it made it into the PDF, but the 2016 and 2017 data is just publicly available actually on the AOE website. You can go and find it. And what you'll find is that SA and IAA don't have this income disaggregate on there. You'll see blank spaces where the data should be because numbers are too low in those schools. So when you break that out into, these are the students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and these are the students who don't, you have such a small sample size that it is a FERPA violation to publish that. So I'm just using this publicly available state data.
Students can be identified because the numbers are so low.
Right. So it's, it's just a, it's just a numbers game, and, and it's just a...
It's because of the comparisons aren't available, is that what you're saying?
No, it's just that the numbers are too small.
No, I hear what you're saying.
She talked about FERPA, the, the, the AOE doesn't publish the numbers as well either because the numbers are so minute that you'd be able to identify who those students were. And then that would be breaking a violation, so they don't publish that, that, that.
It's a threshold that they have to...
But Stephen, what is available would be the, that cohort as a whole. So you could look at all of third grade, but it will not be broken down by income. So it's all mushed together, which we find, which is actually the first place, honestly, that the public generally goes is, you know, you go on those great school sites, things like that, people just look at that one number. Well, depending on who's in those schools, you know, you're going to see huge variation. And again, what Ron Ferguson said, unfortunately, we can predict that fairly accurately just based on that. And so that, that's what's not available. I have had some thoughts though, Stephen, because I, I predicted that there'd be board members who would bring this up and might even be interested. And so, you know, this is something that the chair and Yau could talk about. We could do that in an executive session. I assume we could do that in an executive session. That I don't know if legally we can do that. But, so again, we're not trying to hide something here. And in fact, like, I have the data scribbled on a piece of paper that I, I crunched it myself. All I did was look at, all I could do was look at this year's sixth graders who came from the two magnet schools, so looked at their fifth grade scores. And it's comparable, which I think is important for people to know. In other words, you look at those graphs, it's comparable. High-income kids do really, really well, low-income kids don't do as well. And they do basically as well as their peers do at the other schools. So there's nothing, there's nothing outrageous, too high, too low out of that. So, but I'd be happy to share that if we can do that. Yeah.
Commissioner Fisher?
So, so I do this as my day job, right? And this is building reports, what we call KPIs, key performance indicators, measure them over time, track progress, drive decision-making. I want to say that just getting to this point where you guys have the ability to, to do this is, I understand how much work this, this is, and I'll try and, and share that with the board, this tremendous amount of work to get the data to this point that you can start to slice and dice it. And you can slice and dice data eight different ways a Sunday. And so what, what I'm going to offer to do is I'm, I'm moving to the policy and governance committee, and I think that data should be part of every monitoring report you receive from the superintendent. And that gives us the ability to look at progress over time using data. So I'm going to offer that I take lead on the, the data reported and work through the monitoring reports with the superintendent to start to build in these types of reports into that, into the, into the monitoring report so that the board can see it. And you guys can all work with me if you say, hey, I want to see the, you know, the data as a cohort from, you know, sixth grade to 12th grade and funnel it through the policy and governance committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner, anyone else, Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I, I agree that it's really clear how much work you guys put into this, all of this. And I mean, it kind of represents the entire, you know, equity and inclusion strategy of the district, and is packed. I, I just have comments about kind of the process and the report, and then a question, just in terms of like, the process of this being a monitoring report that we review. This is really the heart and soul of policy governance. And so when you watch the Munizki School Boards, you know, this is really the opportunity to have the conversation about this, the substance of this report. And so I think it's, it would be, you know, great if this board moved in the direction of policy governance so that we have time as a board to have conversations and not just have it be a presentation by staff on the agenda that we all just kind of rubber stamp. This really is the chance to dig in for an hour and communicate back to the superintendent a little more depth and substance and reflection. And toward that end, you know, I think that the monitoring report itself, you know, I don't mean to sound critical. I just, I think it's the board's work to really say how we want the information systematized and organized so that we, so that's meeting our needs for understanding the district. And Mike, I came to the meeting with the same thought that for this particular monitoring report, this also ties into your policy proposal, Commissioner Wick, about how to manage these monitoring reports is, and I'm not, I think this is a great conversation to have. You know, my thought was that this report would be a great monitoring report for the DE and I committee to steward because that's where it comes from. And the data sets are about achievement gap and equity and inclusion. But however, I agree with you that the policy governance role is to structure the monitoring reports so they do support the board's work and the board's strategic thinking. So we should work together somehow. Now that we have all these balkanized committees, we should figure out how to work together across committee lines. So in terms of the actual substance of the report, I did have questions about the, the disparity data shows the income disparity. But does it also reflect the disparity between schools? So for example, the disparity between the middle schools when you look at Edmonds and Hunt. To me, that's, you know, a reflection, crisis proportions of the, the kind of just institutionalized gap at this point between Hunt and Edmonds, and how we have yet, we have failed to really address that. And my fear is that it's getting worse. Is that also what we're seeing?
I mean, you could definitely interpret it that way. I, I, what I would want to see is I would want to see where those students were at the end of fifth grade. Because I could almost guarantee you that that will look just like that. In other words, they entered those two schools exactly like that. And in fact, if we looked at that, if we brought that slide back up there, you would actually see that at Hunt, low-income kids made real growth there. Growth that we don't see at, by the way, at a lot of our other schools in the district as a cohort. They started low, as they did at Edmonds as well. High-income kids started extraordinarily high at Edmonds. There's not really anywhere to go when you're up there. And at Hunt, they were starting much lower. And there was some growth. It was fairly incremental, I would say, if I, you know, remember that. So I would say yes, but I wonder if that's really about, any of the strategies that we're talking about, if that's really about, if we're sort of like when we created the magnet schools, if it's really something that's about redistricting and this board wanting to take on. Like, if this board really wanted to create two schools where kids entered there in sixth grade, where the two, the population of the schools looked similar, that's a massive undertaking. So I think that's the bigger issue, but I could be wrong.
Well, I mean, just to, if it's all right to carry on just a little bit. To me, it's not, I think this is, the middle schools to me has been a burning issue for years. And I think it would be great to see this board embrace that as a strategic goal. You know, my question is not about, I don't buy into the notion that income diversity results in achievement gap closure. In fact, there's examples all across the country of low-income schools achieving at higher rates than we have at any of our schools. So to me, it is more about, is Hunt a magnet school? You know, are we going to find strategies to support? Or do we do something at Edmonds, more focused on kids who are eligible for free and reduced lunch? So, you know, it's more about that than, I'm not, you know, I don't rush to like, you know, let's create socioeconomic diversity for the sake of socioeconomic diversity because it hasn't changed the outcomes at the magnet schools per se or necessarily that we've seen over time.
I just need to touch a little bit. I think this is, this is, this is great conversations, and I like what Commissioner Fisher and, and Commissioner Curry had talked about as well too. And I think there's even a step before we funnel it out to the different committees. Like, this conversation, having staff bring some data and have some conversations and bring out what the prevalent issues from the board members, and then deciding, because if we decide we're going to focus on early learning, or we're going to focus on middle school, whatever. And that gives us a focus. Then you can identify what data metrics you want to use that. And then that informs our budget process as well too, where we're going to put our dollars. And so I think there's an opportunity there to have some really good conversations around teaching and learning. And that's our business. And if we can make space for that somewhere, I think that'll help the board in terms of crystallizing where it wants to go, and then be able to look back at that as they make decisions to remember the priorities that were established. So something for the executive to think about as we plan, some of the planning for future.
I just have one question, personal curiosity. Do we have like the scholastic or reading, like, assessment data as well?
SRI.
Yeah.
Yep.
I was just curious, just because looking at the data and like the trend, I know it's just one year and one data set, but because I, from my memory of elementary school, we didn't do math any further back than third grade, like, in K-1, 2. But we do do the reading in at least two, like, grades before. Just looking at like when that achievement gap starts to solidify itself and kind of set in, is like in that video, talking about just how young it can kind of begin to manifest.
People, yeah, actually start in...
Right, in pre-K, kindergarten, yeah.
Yeah, pre-K, yeah, before. But just looking at that data and like looking at younger grade levels too, because it's hard to get that data because there's not as much standardized testing, but...
Yeah, you, you probably don't remember back to second grade, but, and I'm not sure if we were using, because you're a junior now, right, or a senior?
Senior.
Senior, okay. So if we go back 10 years, I don't know if we were using Fuentes and Pennell. I think we were. Actually, it was my first year in the district. And so, yes, so that's what we call our progress monitoring data.
Yep.
And we do track that. The standardized testing data starts in third grade. And then we add the scholastic reading inventory and a similar math assessment, starting in sixth grade.
So, sorry, this is just, again, completely out of curiosity. So do we not do that SRI stuff before?
No, that's not, that's not geared for really before sixth grade. So, but we do do a different, we do this thing called Fuentes and Pennell, which is done three times a year by the classroom teachers, yes. And we track that in our database. Thank you.
Commissioner Awal?
You were talking about having these boards that people, data boards. Do you ever use that? I, I guess for me, I've lived in other countries, and nobody did the kind of testing we do. And I would like to see that we also look at monitoring things, our kids' progress, without looking just at test scores, any kind of test, any kind of, four different kinds of tests that we do. Because at some point, this is going to become un, economically totally unfeasible or infeasible for us as a district because we pay immense amount of money. And I would, and I think it is for a country going to get. And there's many countries, some of which are the top countries in education in the world, that do none of this testing. And so if we're going to ever get our public to understand that we could live without millions and millions of dollars of, of testing, maybe we need to start showing other ways of monitoring that kids are making progress so that with time, our populace understands that we can do without a lot of these tests.
Thank you.
I'll just, slide number six, when you have time, another time, has a bullet point half, three quarters of the way down, and it talks about using data effectively includes three types, satellite data, map data, and street data. And that's sort of referring to exactly what you said, Kathy. So that satellite data is those standardized tests. The map data is more of the Fuentes and Pennell, progress monitoring, those things that teachers are doing regularly in their classrooms, either because they're required to or because they choose to. But then there's the street data, which I think is what you're getting at, which is, you know, what are you seeing going on in your school, at the classroom level, at the principal level, at the superintendent level, my level? You know, what are you hearing? What is, what is that stuff that really isn't as quantifiable? And our climate survey is getting at some of that. We know that climate's important. Relationships are important.
I also mean the other stuff, the second tier of it.
Yeah, that second tier.
Because that's what I think many of those schools do, is use that instead.
And I would say teachers find that way more meaningful than standardized test data. And I know as a teacher, I looked at my standardized, my annual test data. It was helpful. I was really looking at that, did my kids make a year's worth of growth or more? I don't really care where they were. I want to know where did they get to. They could have gotten in way below grade level, and they're still below grade level, but they've made at least a year's worth of progress. But as far as looking and reflecting on my teaching and my curriculum, that's not helpful because those kids are gone, right? They're gone. They're in the next grade. And so, and, you know, seeing Keith, you know, as a former teacher, you know, I think you know exactly what I'm talking about there. And so I think, yes, we can overemphasize that standardized data. There is some help in comparing ourselves to others in the state and others regionally to see, are we, are we matching up, or are we, are we behind, or are we ahead on some things? But it's one tiny data point.
Kathy, you're right though, the short, short answer, that we, in the US, we spend the most amount of dollars on just testing, right? Where other countries who...
And time, in school.
And time, yes, just resources. That's all. Spend more time on the actual learning. We spend, there's a whole industry around it, there's an economic thing where we have consultants. We have all kinds of companies that do it for districts and things like that. So part of that's the economic thing that's kind of entrenched into the way we run education. But, yeah, we'll try to limit that as much. And that's why, you know, Victor's introduced the other language around how we can monitor how students are doing. But we also have to educate our communities, right? Because a lot of parents want to see just the numbers, right? And, and, and so we got to find a way to help them understand that there's progress in different ways as well too. Okay, Chair Will?
And then I will just conclude with, there were a number of families, members of the community that had reached out to myself. I'm not sure if other board members received that, just wanting to learn more about your graphs. And so a follow-up to what you had said in that invitation and what that looks like, that the superintendent and I can work on, you know, per capita, average, how much per average, you know, different concerns or questions that they had to better understand it. So I welcome that opportunity to do that and work with you, and thank you for this presentation. Thank you. Moving on to DM.
Do you have a motion to receive the...
Monitoring report, yes.
...as presented?
Yes. We'll make that motion. Second, Commissioner Awal. All those in favor?
Sorry, Chair Will, point of order. Can we have discussion?
Sure.
So are you putting this in, I'm sorry, so are you submitting this as your monitoring report for the achievement gap?
This is the 1.1 monitoring report.
So my concern...
That report.
Mike, what I see this as, is an explanation of where you guys are with reporting. Because this, this to me does not show where we are in a district in terms of our achievement gap. If it is, it would be systematic across the, it's a, it's a great, some great examples, but to me, it's not a holistic report on a district's achievement gap.
I think you need to look at the entire report, like, the, the presentation, but the actual report itself. the actual report itself is around reducing disparities and the strategies around that.
The word document?
The word document, yeah.
Yeah, so I did review that.
So I would say, take a look at the report, and if you think the interpretation that we've written is not where the board wants it to be, then you'd have to kind of give us more, because this is the same report we did, this is the second time we've done it.
Right.
And we didn't get any feedback to change anything from the last time, so we've kind of pretty much replicated the same information and reported back to that. But if you're saying you, you want it to look something different, then I think that's up to the board to say, okay, we need to change the policy on that, so then the superintendent can interpret it differently and bring us back different information or a different analysis.
So, I'll just explain, I hear what you're saying, but I'm looking at this paragraph, analysis of current data, right? Do you talk about the proficiency? You have one sentence about proficiency, you have one sentence about suspensions, or two sentences about suspensions. That to me is not a report.
Well, you also have to include, on that same page, there are many documents that we provided that reports on progress of different, you're right.
Yep.
You're right, like that's part of the report, instead of us rewriting all of that, we've made those links for people to look at, the graduation PLP report, graduation requirements, professional learning framework.
Yep, to me, to me, this is all the data that, that you should be bringing together and giving a report on the achievement gap. If we've been asked time again, been asked time again by constituents, what is our progress towards the achievement gap? It is such a major part of, it's our mission, right, to close the achievement gap. How are we doing? We should be able to say, this is how we're doing. And there should be a summary executive, an executive summary to say, this is how we're doing, and this is not it.
Yeah, I, if that's what, same, if that's what you want, then it has to be clear and clear. We presented the same report last year, and we didn't get that feedback. No one said, come back with an executive summary around the achievement gap. We said, okay, this is good, was there any other feedback? I think we had a couple little nuances that we've changed. But if you're talking about a separate sort of achievement gap report, then let's name it, let's, let's just call it that, it's just a specific report. And then I would ask the board to have conversations around what are the indicating metrics. If you notice on the second page, this is what we went through with the board, and said, these are the indicating metrics, this is what we're going to share with you, and people agreed with that. So if you want it to look different, then I would say, you need to kind of give us some feedback on what specifically that you want, and then we could deliver on that.
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I, I have the same sentiment, Commissioner Fisher, and this is exactly what I meant by policy governance being driven by the board, so that we define the outcomes we want, and that those outcomes are reported on in the report. And if you look at the Winuski documents, and you look at their process, you will see them, you know, not accept, like define that first, and then they get a report from the superintendent, and it may not answer all their questions. And so then they say, this has not answered the questions about the outcomes that we have defined, could you please? And they have a discussion. And then they say, could you please bring us back more information about this particular item? And it is a process, and it is on our ETN, and so it can be observed. And I think it would be great if this board began to operate like that, because it starts to systematize the strategic work of the district with an outcomes focus and define metrics for how to get there. And so, you know, I sympathize with Superintendent O'Bang, because we have not done that, we have not defined that, and I sound like a broken record, but that's our job. So I am right there with you in your sentiment, but I feel like because we have not defined that, we are in the position of, putting ourselves in the position of basically having to accept this, because we have no, you know, basis for not accepting it.
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah. I'm not sure I, I agree with the sentiment of Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Fisher, except to the extent, it's, it's not clear to me that it's the board's responsibility to both set the policy and then tell him exactly how we want him to respond. In other words, I would think he would be in a good position, I think he and his team are making real progress on figuring out what are the metrics we want to measure in order to determine compliance with this very brief policy statement, which simply says, reducing disparities, the difference in academic achievement between the highest and lowest achieving student groups will decrease. So, it's not clear to me that, I'll just call us 12 volunteer board members, are the ones who should be putting the metrics together to report on this policy. I actually think I'm looking at a very impressive team who's working very hard at doing that. And I just want to make sure that by accepting the report, we're just saying, the superintendent's own status says in progress. So it's not saying in compliance, it's not even saying partial compliance. I think this team is, appears to be doing a lot of great work, and what strikes me is that it's a lot of work, and it takes a lot longer than we thought it might take. But look at, look at this, I'm very impressed, and I think it is in progress. And so I don't mean to denigrate anything either of you were just saying, because, you know, it's frustrating, it's been our mission for a few years, and we really can't report objectively how we're doing, but we're working hard towards it. And so I'm personally pleased at all this, and I'm okay saying, okay, if what he's asking us to do is, is accept the report as in progress, I think that's true.
Any other discussion? Then we did, Mike, did you, did anyone?
Who, who made the motion in the second?
I think that you did.
Wait, you?
Commissioner, Superintendent O'Bang did. So Commissioner Awal will make the motion to accept.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry, who was that?
Commissioner Awal will make the motion.
Thank you.
To accept the following monitoring process, policy 1.1, status in progress.
Who's the second?
Was it Commissioner Wick?
My second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? And policy?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, Commissioner Pillsbury? Thank you. All right, then the policy has been accepted. And one more.
Thank you, just a few quick comments. Well, I think I made this comment maybe about two months ago, when we were talking about the, the policies. The policies, intentionally, we have some of the limitations that are in progress or partially completed, and that is, that is what we're presenting, just letting the board know where we are. And it's up to the board to look at those policies and then give some direction. I, I go back to, we recommended that we elicit the support of Michael Healy, who helped, and I think simply the board just having the conversation and saying, this is what we want to do, someone like that would be able to give some guidance in terms of how we look at these monitoring reports, and the board can give direction to get exactly what they want. Because I know there is a, there is a strategic way to go through it, and which we haven't been doing, I guess, because one of the things I know he does is breaks it down in terms of, look at the interpretation, what does that mean, look at the metrics, you know, and then get to that. So if the board is really interested, I would, I would suggest if they want to have a conversation, that you utilize someone like that as, as a guide, to help to achieve the things that you, you want to get to.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Laura.
Thank you.
DMG presentation.
So I will ask Laura to try to keep this as brief as possible. I know that she's been at committee to share, but wanted to, but the entire board did not have that opportunity. So she'll give a quick thumbnail, and of course, if the board would like us to come back and have more conversations, I'm sure Laura would be able to do that as well, too.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. The, the presentation is pretty wordy, intentionally, so that you can have that as a reference.
Jeff.
So.
Next to the super.
Laura.
Oh, grab that mic there.
Oh, this one.
She might, your mic might be.
Does that work?
Yep.
Thank you. So, I don't know if everyone heard me, but the, the presentation is intentionally wordy so that it can stand on its own, you don't have to depend on me to translate it for you. There are references on the last slide as well, for more detail. So, and I'm not going to bore you with reading the slides, because you can certainly do that when you have a chance to later, but the long and short of it is, the district management group has demonstrated success in multiple states throughout the country with creating change to, for better outcomes for kids. Certainly whenever you see me, you're going to, you're going to think that I'm talking about special ed, but I'm really talking about changing systems to support all kids to reduce identification of disability. We currently are rapidly, our child count is going up quite quickly, roughly 50 kids a year. So one of the things that we wanted to do is to look at our practices and compare them to national best practices. If you go forward with the, I don't know who's operating this.
Here.
Oh. I want to show you, the districts in Vermont are currently using district management group. These are the districts that are using district management group for the same purposes that we are. Our, our contract is, is longer, three years, as opposed to one year, which is the case for some of these. But there are also other districts that are using them for help with the consolidation process, and also for, for other reasons, professional development and so on. But I want to show you that district management group is well represented in our, in our state, and I do know that Essex Westford is willing to speak to school board members to share their experience as well, if that's helpful. So, the idea is to ensure that tier one instruction is done well, that our teachers are supported in their ability, and, so you know, it's not about saying the teachers aren't doing the job they need to do. What it is saying is that we need to look at our systems to make sure that we have the proper systems in place to support the teachers to do this, this, this work. And what we want to do is have district management group come and do a deep dive into our, our systems, our culture, our, the way we operate, and compare us to national best practices, and show us where maybe we are doing really well, and where we could do things differently. And then if we go ahead. As I said, it was, the research is also referenced in the back, we have the UVM has done a study about our funding, our state funding around special ed, and this is all connected, because state funding for, how they're funding special education is changing. It's not going to be siloed, assuming everything continues the way they're planning to do it now. I understand that Act 46 is slowing down, that, that resistance to mergers is slowing down, the funding structure changes, and could make some, who knows where we're going to land. But the, the plan right now is that in five years, special ed funding will be completely unsiloed in, with state funds. And also that we're going to be funding, we're going to be getting state funding based on the enrollment numbers. So why we need change? Well, as I said before, we are, in Burlington, we are, and I know that Commissioner Curry also said, we are identifying kids at a pretty rapid pace, we have a very challenging population of kids with, with mental health needs, and that's actually not only national, but I think it's kind of a worldwide problem right now. But we certainly are representative of that as well. And there's so many things that, while we're doing many things well, there's many things that we can do better, as always. As I always say, we have lots of room for improvement, which is a good thing. So if you move forward a little more, and as, the reports are not attached, but there are references in the back that you can look at, our special education right now is primarily, the long and short of it is, is that we have our tier one instruction in our classrooms, and our teachers are doing a wonderful job, they're great teachers, I've seen them in action, too, but there isn't a lot between doing well and failing, meaning there isn't what they call tier two supports, very much of that in our district. And that's not, again, an uncommon thing in the state or nationally. But what we need to do better is create supports that help kids before they fail. Special ed is a failure model. So you have to actually be about a year and a half behind your peers. And ideally, I mean, honestly, the law is written in such a way that you, a person shouldn't qualify with a disability if they've gotten good first instruction. So what we need to do is be sure we're actually doing that, and that kids aren't getting pulled out of first instruction to get second instruction. Our schedules really do drive what we do, and that's one of the first things we're going to do with DMG, it actually started, where they're working with our schools to help create better schedules, so kids are not losing time for first instruction, and that kids are getting interventions every day. So this is, okay, the 10 best practices are the positive slide, I have one positive and one not so positive. And you'll see here, the 10 best practices for improving special education, which is certainly a focus of this, and you can take a look at that. But we're looking at, the one that really strikes me is ensuring that content strong staff provide intervention support, and that high quality in district programs for students with more severe needs, kids with more severe needs are, are supported by high quality instruction. That is an awkward sentence.
Go ahead.
And then 10, this is the negative slide, I love slides that start with don't, 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 but this is one of the things, it's, it's a warning if nothing else. We shouldn't be forgetting that, that reading really is the gateway. If reading, you know, even to be successful in most of our math classes, especially at the upper levels, you need to have a really good understanding of language. And I, I'm sure Yale teachers would, would agree, that kids who are, kids who are struggling with reading are going to be struggling in all areas of learning. Homework help is not the same as getting instructional time, although a lot of times that's what our special educators are doing, especially again at the high school level. We don't want to wait to get started, but we also can't move too quickly, we want to proceed cautiously, and that's why I appreciate having this opportunity to speak with you. So, okay, here's where we get down to what we're doing. So in our first year, as I said, we want to do a deep dive into our, our practices, our schedules, talking, the DMG will come in and talk to teachers, interview teachers, speak to not just our professional teaching staff, but also our paraeducators, the people who help, who work with kids every day, to find out what is going on, Yale teachers, art teachers, you know, everybody, to get a really realistic, high impact, look at what we're doing. And then they're going to, as we said, compare our practices to national best practices, and then give us a report, telling us what they think that we're doing well, what we should do differently. This is not an inexpensive thing, none of these three years are inexpensive, as you know. The first year is $125,000 of the fee for that. And I've spoken to other district directors in this, in the state, and it was suggested to me, well, you know, why don't we just take one of the reports from San Diego, Essex, and follow that? Well, and there's a few reasons why I say that wouldn't work for us. One is that we don't have the infrastructure that Essex has. They have a ton more administrators than we do, and, and we have intentionally focused on boots on the ground, which is fine, it's just that we need to know that we, that's, that's just a consequence of that, it's not a negative, it's just the way it is. And then, so that's what we're paying, in part, paying for, is that DMG is going to do that heavy lifting. And also because, you know, Burlington is not Essex, Burlington is not even Winuski, we are very different. And when I've compared our data to other places, I'd say, I, I lived in Silver Spring, Maryland, so I chose that, we have more in common with Silver Spring, Maryland, and their demographics than we have with, with, with Essex, in many ways, with, with poverty and with diversity of our student population. So, in the second year, we'd be targeting, we'd be looking at targeted implementation supports and continuous scheduling support. So once the scheduling support, that would be more of working with school calendars, because what worked one year may not work the next year. The idea, though, is to get us, to have us start developing an ability to become more and more independent. I personally am not a strong believer in a consultation model going more than three to five years, and this is a three-year, three-year plan. So that's what we'd be doing, that year was, it was 225,000, and that's also a lot of big lifting. The second year is somewhat undefined, because we don't know what the first year's going to recommend yet. However, they're projecting that we're going to continue honing in on best practices, cross-departmental teams will work with, with our, in our schools. The idea is to get teachers really involved, to really tap into what we have, our strengths. And again, this is 195,000 for the second year, roughly, as someone said earlier, half, half million dollar investment. So where's the money coming from? So we are, that's, right, go right ahead there, we are using Medicaid funds. So there's a few safeguards we have here. First of all, that, I will say that the school, Medicaid funds are school-based health services programs, they're money, this is money that we get when our special educators, speech pathologists, school psychologists, all the other people who do provide service to kids with disability, provide these services, Medicaid reimburses us for some of it. In previous years, we, when I first took over this role, we were bringing in about $425,000 a year in Medicaid reimbursement. And this year, my Medicaid clerk told me, we, we went over a million. We will not stay at that level, that was recovery dollars, because we had lost, because we were recovering lost dollars in the past that weren't recovered appropriately. in the past that weren't recovered appropriately. We will probably level out around eight hundred thousand, which is what AOE had projected. And the reason why we changed the funding, the way we did business with the Medicaid reimbursements, because we knew that there was dollars we weren't capturing. Now, we're doing better, and a lot of that is because our special educators, speech pathologists, and all the other people who work with kids with disability have been working for is the desire, they desire change. I think I can clearly say that when we look at the work that they've done and the fact that I have been saying to them for three years, if you want to see change, this is the way we can make it because now we can, we can raise the dollars to help us make change. And they've done the work. And if they didn't want, I am supposing, but if they didn't want this change, then they may not have done that work. So, especially at this level, we're talking about filling out paperwork that checks every time you provide a service for a kid and sending it in every month for more than one, for every single child you see that qualifies. Now, we have an outstanding Medicaid staff too, but, and they're wonderful. I can't say enough about them. But I just want to emphasize that this is not something that I decided in isolation that we should do. As I said, we have support of the special education staff. We have the support of the Agency of Education that is also heavily monitoring and auditing us right now due to, they do it with everybody, but also due to the fact that they've seen some issues around noncompliance that we've had, we're working on now as well in terms of getting paperwork done in time. So, I really feel that this is an important piece to help us get things under control and hopefully give our staff more time to get things that are important done, i.e. working with kids. So.
Thank you. This was just an information item. I know the board members maybe had some questions for Laura while she's here.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Curry.
Firstly, I want to say thank you and congratulations for doubling the Medicaid revenue to the district. That makes a big difference. My question is, could you speak to how this consultation work and the outcome will foster inclusion as a strategy in the district?
So, right now, we are, we are really good firefighters, right? We are, we try really hard. Our staff works very hard all the time to put out fires that are, when I say fires, I mean kids aren't getting services maybe the way that they would be in their better interest. I don't want to say best interest was not our goal, but to give kids reasonable access to learning is our goal. And we, right now, feel incredibly understaffed. We feel incredibly stressed and strained, and our kids certainly are not getting the best of us. I believe that if we can do a better job in using the staff that we have, I'm not saying we necessarily going to need a ton more staff, and if we do need more staff, it may not be special educators. It may be reading teachers or math teachers. It could be other types of specialists or even classroom teachers, right? I don't think that it's in anyone's best interest to create a massive special education structure. It's in everyone's best interest, however, to create a really strong Tier One and Tier Two support system and having a good, solid backup Tier Three special ed system. That will create equity for everybody. That will address the needs of E.L. students as well because then again, we could invest more, more time and money into our E.L. programs, which would be, which, as was said earlier, we are under identifying for lots of reasons. But if we really want to create classrooms where kids are not having emotional struggles, are not feeling disenfranchised because they're being suspended, I truly believe the way that we can best do that is to create really strong classrooms and giving our teachers support so they can get, do the best work they can.
Commissioner Wick.
Couple of very quick questions. You don't have to answer them now. It might be for Superintendent Obang. Are we confident that this is an allowable, this is an allowable use of special ed funds? I just want to put that out there and just suggest that we want to make sure, because I don't know the rules on that.
So, on this slide here behind you, I underline the passage that identifies why it's allowable. We, for, I will say too, that in addition to the language, it's intended to facilitate early identification of an intervention with children with disabilities and to ensure all students achieve rigorous and challenging supports. That was right there. It was, oh, there you go, standards, right? So, the idea is that we can use the money to create programs, create supports, which is exactly what we're doing with this. I will also say that we have checked with the Medicaid Division of the Agency of Education. Our Medicaid clerk has also said that this is an appropriate use, as has Director of Finance.
Thank you. And then just quick follow-up to that question. There's an impressive list of Vermont's school districts on your report. Wow. I can't believe he's working in that many schools or his team. How far, how many of them are sort of done and have implemented, and is there a track record of success here, or is he still just in the year one, two, and three with all these schools? So, we don't know if it's a successful outcome.
At least ten of those school districts did this in my first year in my role, so two years ago. So, Essex Westford is willing to speak to you about the, their track record and success and reliance on the reports.
I think that would be very helpful for the board to better understand whether this product is valuable in the end.
Yeah, and I think Chair Luen and I actually received the presentation, I think it was last year, at the V.S.B.A. session where he presented to the state, and there were the ten, he did a report on the ten school, ten districts that he'd been working with in the last few years. Other than that, he's also working across the nation with other school districts. So, we've had consultation with other school districts who've had their, their services over the last several years. So, and as Laura said, the AOE has kind of supported them, the V.S.A. and V.S.B.A. both have endorsed them, and they've had them at our different training sessions to share what's happened in the other districts. So, he comes well recommended and has a lot, and I think he was, he was even willing to come to the board and share some of the work that they've done. So, might be something you might want to do down the road.
The other thing too, fail-safe, that we put in to the contract is that if, for some reason, our friends in the federal government decide that they're no longer going to give us Medicaid reimbursement, we can discontinue the contract. So, we don't, we won't be holding the bag in local dollars.
Commissioner Avantich, then Awel, I close, very.
I was wondering how this all fits in with Act one seventy-three, which you must be familiar with.
Right. So, the question, you know, it's hard to answer because Act one seventy-three is still kind of somewhat ill-defined and is not rolling out yet, but this is, this shouldn't have any impact on it at all because intentionally using these funds separates it from the local reimbursement. It's not money we get reimbursed locally anyway or from the state.
I think you're asking for, how can this support, if it needs to act seven-three? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, or how it's going to fit in if that restructured, if that restructures how we pay for special ed, Act one seventy-three.
Yes, that, well, Act one seventy-three is intended to allow us greater latitude and use of funds instead of only using, so for example, right now, if I had a reading group, I wanted to make sure I got it 100% reimbursed, and my reading group was of five children, I would have to have at least three children in that reading group that had IEPs so that I could get 100% reimbursement. The idea behind that, though, now, is that with Act one seventy-three, is that I will now, once it's fully implemented, will not have to worry about that. So, I would just pick the five kids that needed my help.
This is a one seventy-three conversation, but one of the fears I know some district and board members across the state have had is that maybe the funds won't go directly to special ed students anymore because we'll have that flexibility to say, oh, we've got the money. We can use it for, we can include special ed kids where we can do something else. So, people are also cautious that districts will take the money and not use it solely on special ed and start citing it for something else.
Commissioner Awel.
On that note, actually, I, you know, I have my big qualms about this. And, and having read a lot about District Management Group and council, which are all the same, but after a lot of bad press, they changed it to the other name, I just, I have, and I spent six years almost or more on the EPSDT Committee for this district in what we do with our Medicare funds. This would never have been allowed. So, either they've changed them, but if they have okayed them, before we go and use Medicare reimbursement, because we as a board, I feel like you should give us written with signature from the Medicare people at AOE that they are okaying this because I, I feel really worried that we're going to say yes to this. We're going to spend it, and it's going to come back to haunt us, that this was not a legal use of Medicare reimbursement funds. So, I, I would like to see, if we're going to go ahead with this, I really would like to see a signed AOE letter stating that this use is okay.
So, I, you know, I'm more than happy to follow up to be absolutely certain of that. I can tell you that I have talked to our Medicaid clerk and I've talked to Nate and Larry, our finance director, and I, they've told me that this is a legitimate use. The Agency of Ed thought it was a great idea too, but I don't have anything in writing that says that. And if it, you know, I, I can follow up and see what I can get.
That's a good idea. Good. Commissioner Pelsbury, you have?
Yes. Can I just add, the other thing that we did in our, in our contract is we have an opt-out. So, we can get out of, so if we found out that we were, the services weren't really exactly what we wanted to, we have an opt-out that we can say, okay, we don't want to do this any longer, so.
Right, but when you also said that this whole list of people, most of them used them for one year. So, why are we using them for three if we in one year get the recipe of what we need to do? Why are we doing three years worth of?
Well, I don't know how many years all of them did, but I do know, for example, Essex only did one year, but the reason why they did one year is because they have massive, they have, they have the largest amount of administrators per student in the state, is my understanding. So, they can take the report and implement it on their own. The idea behind our plan was because we don't have sufficient structures in place right now. You know, honestly, if I, if, I think that it would make sense for us to do is to look at the first, the report and then decide where we want to go with that. We have, even if we have no problem with funding, we still have an annual opt-out option. So, we can talk about, I'd say, I think it makes sense to get.
We could do one year if we wanted to.
Right. We could.
Commissioner Fisher, and then one more.
Did you, did you miss me?
I thought she was speaking to you. No?
No.
Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Pelsbury.
I'm not getting paranoid, but I've been told. Okay. I have two questions. I'm confused. Have we already signed the contract, or are we going to, is the board going to give you approval to sign the contract?
We signed the contract in, what was that?
We, the reason why we're here is because Chair expressed that board members wanted to have more information about it. I know Laura's already had conversations with board members at committees and things like that. What my direction was to Laura was that once she did the vetting through the AOE and the finance director and all that, was to make sure that we have a buyout clause in case we're not happy with the, with the services.
So, we've spent the money? That's what, I'm just really.
No, we haven't spent the money. Yeah, it doesn't start till.
We will be spending the money without our approval.
We, well, we didn't need your approval for that particular item.
Oh, this is.
Yeah. This is information. This is because we want to share with you, because we want you to understand what we're doing and be able to move forward. And I think Laura's been speaking with a number of board members in the last several months trying to explain, and this was an opportunity to bring it to the entire board because some people haven't had the opportunity to.
This is not part of our budget, then?
No.
This is money we're getting and not a part of the budget, so, okay. Second thing, I, you make it sound like we're going to be adding personnel. You talked about different people we might be adding. Is that part of, that's, that's going to come from our regular budget then? If you, if you talk to staff, if you talk to taxpayers, parents, staff, we've really kind of cut a lot of positions in our, in our school district and really, and if you look, if you look at people, we'll tell, we'll say, they have all kinds of ideas of what we should be doing better. We need to pay somebody else to tell us that.
So, you know, one of the things that I read about, speaking about DMG and, I don't want to say, one of the negative comments about DMG and other places was that we know what to do. Why don't we just do it? My answer is, we didn't though, had we? We haven't. My point is, is that we haven't done it. We, it's one thing to know what we need to do, and it's another thing to do it. It's that lift, that to get us from point A to point B and how to go with the, what the path is. So, yeah, I know there's a lot of ideas, but I mean, I'd say that if we get ten people in a room, they'll give us eleven ideas. So, and also, they're not necessarily vetted by best practice. So, what DMG can bring us that maybe ten people, very brilliant people in our district might not be able to do, is to give us that national overview about what is the best way for us to go. It is ultimately going to be up to us, though, to decide what it is we're going to do with the report when we get it. And to speak to hiring staff, I don't know that that's what we're going to do. I just, I am just supposing that one of the things that might be recommended is more classroom teachers, more math teachers, more, you know, I don't know, more E.L. teachers seems likely and based on my point of view.
Yeah, that's a good question. I try to hopefully caution staff about predisposing what the report's going to say because we don't know. That's the whole point of doing it. But we want to get the analysis from an external person to say, hey, one of the things I like about the group right now is because they have many Vermont districts as samples to compare what's happened, and we can check with them as well too and say, what did your report look like and what did you do, and give us that vetting before we take any action. Once the report comes back, then we'll give us an opportunity to look at an action plan in terms of what we need to do to create better inclusion for our students. And for sure, if it means adding staff, then for sure, that would come to the board in terms of our budget process and say, this is what we've got, and we think, we need more special educators or whatever it means if that's the case, right?
I hope that also means cutting because across the country, it was more the cuts that were the things that people were critical about.
That's what he emphasized on June last year, was cutting, cutting.
Okay. Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, it seems to me that, that this is the opportunity to design an inclusion strategy, and I believe it's part of the Delt teamwork. One of the things I would like to talk about at the retreat is asking the Delt team and the group we just heard from before this about a staffing configuration for the next three to five years that would align with the strategic plan so that we have a very intentional approach to staffing. It's always stressful for teachers when there's not enough adults in the classroom. That is just a fundamental challenge with education, and as this report says, more bodies in the classroom doesn't necessarily achieve what we're looking for with the kids. It helps everybody feel better. It helps take the pressure off, but it's the kind of adults that are in the classroom. It seems to me that we want to align with our strategic goals, and it would be great to have from staff, you know, a recommendation about that configuration. And along those lines, my question is, you know, will you be, will this report, how will this report support core instruction teachers in understanding, you know, the benefits of having specifically, you know, trained teachers in the classroom, not just more bodies in the classroom? I mean, is it, it seems to me it's intentional.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that, sorry, I'm looking at my notes for Act one seventy-three, and it actually stemmed from both a UVM study and a DMG report. So, it was a DMG report that resulted in Act one seventy-three.
Commissioner Curry, thank you.
You know, I'm just making a couple of comments, but I don't understand, can you hear me? On the microphone? I, I don't really understand why the structure has swung out of control in Burlington School District. And I appreciate the desire to have an outside audit, which is, you know, basically, it's one thing that is very important, you know, you and Stephanie both spoke to that in fact, but I don't understand, you know, why we have swung out of control and what, what can be done within the current structure of leadership that can bring us back into control when it's determining, you know, special ed and supplying children with what they need? So, that's one of my comments. Secondly is, I wonder what, you know, it is a half a million dollars we're talking about in three years. It's not just a hundred and twenty-five. And it doesn't seem to me, like, from what I know about what the plan is for year one, two, and three, it doesn't seem to me that that amount of money. two, and three, it doesn't seem to me that that amount of money is gonna buy much. And the other thing I would comment on was, I, you know, I have a tremendous faith in the knowledge and the experience of these teachers that you've talked about already, the expert teachers in the classroom that I've seen, that you've seen, who know what they need. And that's, yeah, that's one of the common, you know, misconceptions about this, but I'm gonna reiterate it anyway. I have a great faith that our professionals know what they need to close the achievement gap, to meet the needs of every kid in their classroom, and that we need to provide that. And I don't think we, we need to hire an outside source to figure it out and then to go ahead and make those changes. And the other thing I would ask is for us to consider what other direction could those Medicaid monies be placed in, in our district? Instead of the half a million, I worded poorly, excuse me, but what, what could the, the Medicaid monies be used for instead of this district management council cost? What could we do, in other words, with a half a million dollars in Medicaid funds and directed directly to our students who are in need? And then finally, I would like to see some of the negative press out there, because I've read some of it and I wanna see more about it. We've seen roses and, you know, wonderful everything, and there's a lot of negatives about this, and I would like to be able to examine that and have you kinda tell us about that as well, not just what's so wonderful about it, but what are the drawbacks? Thank you. I mean, I don't have, I need an answer right now, I just mean to make those statements.
Commissioner Wick?
We are meeting next week and it's getting late, and one of the reasons for our two meetings has, was to kinda, you know, get out of here earlier so we're still fresh and we meet next week for the overflow. But what I'm really meaning to say is, I feel compelled to ask the superintendent to consider, don't have to answer me now, I, I, without getting into the pro or con of this proposal, I believe a contract of this size requires board approval. I think there is a policy on unbudgeted expenditures and the superintendent's authority to spend up to a certain limit, which I think this exceeds. I'm, I'm not gonna dig through our policies and figure that out, but that's my recollection and I, I think it's worth an answer, because I wouldn't wanna put any of us, including you and Laura, in jeopardy by somebody signing a contract who's not authorized. I would've thought that the board chair would sign a contract of this size. I could be wrong, if you don't mind taking that into consideration and getting back to the board, that would be awesome.
Commissioner Fisher?
So, I have two questions. Number one, I just wanna clarify, I don't think I heard Commissioner Pillsbury, that answer to Commissioner Pillsbury's question. Has this contract been signed, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, it has. Number two is really, Commissioner Curry asked the question that I was going to. If we spend the Medicaid money on this, are we not gonna spend it on other things that we are currently spending it on?
No, there's more mon, there, the, none of the things we currently are spending on will be, will be in any way reduced. The money that's being spent on this is money that we raised above what we have in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Orwell, one last follow-up.
But, but there are other things that that money, Medicaid money could be used for, like social workers, psychologists, things that directly.
We couldn't hire staff with it.
But we could contract, so we could.
We used to hire staff.
We can't hire staff with it. We could, but we could, we can, it's my understanding and, and the manual, I referenced the manual in the, in the references, is that we can't hire staff with Medicaid.
There are some restrictions on what we can. We know that we're allowed to use these dollars for that, yes. You can always say, okay, what else can we spend the money on? So, Laura could do that as well too. But doesn't mean it's gonna be exactly what you want. It may not be on social workers or, but it could be for something else, right?
I just know that when we first had social workers, it came out of our EPSDT money, and so did nurses, and so did drug and alcohol counselors. So, yes, we did pay personnel every year out of EPSDT.
We do have Medicaid, we do have social workers that are contracted from Howard on our, on Medicaid dollars, we just can't hire staff with it.
Right.
If you're contracted, we can't hire permanent staff, is what you're trying to say, right?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Commissioner Fisher?
So, so where do we stand with this? We have a signed contract, there's been concerns raised about the appropriateness of this contract, there's been concerns raised about the superintendent's authority to sign this contract. Where do we stand? What do we do?
I'll look at, I'll, I'll come back to the board. I'll review those questions that Commissioner Wick sent.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, thank you Superintendent Bang, and thank you Director Lauren Nuchen. All right, moving on to SY, school year 20, draft calendar.
Point of order, are, are we gonna continue?
Do we have a plan in terms of time for the, for the agenda?
Yep, we are, Commissioner Wick and I were just discussing to the priority of going over the draft calendar with Superintendent Bang's input, the kindergarten staffing update we think is relatively quick, and then the.
And then after that, we defer.
And then after that, we would defer item E and the policy updates for next.
I'm not sure if I missed it, I think there was an item type pull from the consent agenda? Was there not an item?
Yes.
Is that, are we addressing that? Are we doing, is that on the?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hiring recommendation?
Is that what it is? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're just.
Hiring recommendation, so that the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need to address that tonight. So, the idea was ideally we go into exec session by 9:45 or possibly sooner, and that we, if the board agrees, that we defer section 10 of our agenda, board policy updates, to next week's meeting, because next week's meeting's sort of for the overflow. We all sort of promised each other an earlier end. And also, same thing with section 9E, defer that, so, and hoping that 9D, kindergarten staffing update, if it gets long, we defer the rest of that the next time. So, by 9:45, we're in exec session, first thing we handle very expedition.
Do you wanna ask, what do you think of that?
No, no, that's fine, as long as we, it'd be, we need to address the, the counseling position though today though.
Mm-hmm.
We do.
Yes, so we'll do that.
Do we have a need to do the draft calendar?
It's, it's five minutes.
It's gonna be there.
Yeah.
It's as long as you guys wanna make.
It's not gonna be five.
Okay.
Okay, maybe not.
All right.
Just make suggestions.
Which one is she, is she, is it here for 2.1?
No, she's.
Okay, I think, well, why don't we, we can, we can still do that one.
Okay, do the calendar.
Okay, so, the, just to get, set a little bit of context, the calendar, the basics of the calendar, which includes things like the first day of school and when the vacations will occur, those are dates that are set by the regional superintendents. Basically, the way Vermont statute works, that superintendents who have schools that feed into common tech centers have to agree to 175 common days. So, for us, obviously Burlington Tech Center and Essex Tech Center serve students in Burlington as well as surrounding districts, so YOW and the superintendents from those school districts meet and come up with the calendar setting the 175 common days that all of those districts agree to be in session. They set the first day of school and they set the vacation break. So, all of those pieces are set regionally and are not in our BSD control. What is in our control are the in-service and early release days that are noted on the calendar. So, when we take early release days for professional development, how we use our in-service time. Contractually in Burlington, teachers work for 10 in-service days, and those 10 in-service days are made up of not only professional learning days, but also within that 10 are the days that we designate for parent conferences. So, those are treated as an in-service day as it relates to the contract. So, we get 10 days with teachers for in-service time and we use those for a combination of professional development and parent conferences. So, the calendar reflects both those commitments that are established regionally, first day of school, vacations, and then also dates that as of now, the directors and principals have selected for early release and in-service time as well as parent conference days.
Stephanie, can you just explain the?
The buffer for snow days at the end, 'cause people, on the calendar, so people kinda get that.
Right. So, state statute says you have to have 175 days. In Burlington, we actually build a calendar on 177 days. And so, what happens is the calendar reflects with no snow days what would be the, the last day of school in June, and then we show a buffer both to prepare teachers and families for the fact that we may need to dip into additional days. So, we have a two-day buffer for, for student days, because we typically set our calendar, we do set our calendar on 177, and the state mandate is only 175. So, those are days after the last day of school, I think it's color-coded, it's hard to tell from here, but like maybe a red or maroon color, I can't really tell the coloring. We put those on there because there is a buffer there depending on how many snow days we take, both for making up student days and potentially teacher in-service time.
Commissioner Sowers?
So, I had a question. When we started doing late starts on Wednesdays for the high school and early releases for elementary schools, the deal was that we really would take away the early release days. Over the years, we keep adding them back in and we're still having the late start and early releases, so I've heard from parents about that. And my second question is, is at BHS, you have a lot more days off that you don't come in for when other grades are testing, and there's a lot of non-school days I, I noticed at BHS, and I've heard from a variety of parents who are really unhappy with that. So, I just wanna know how that's reflected and why we still have early release days?
Yes, so, when we started the early release and late start several years ago now, we initially took away those early release days. I think prior to starting the late start and early release, we had five early release days throughout the year. What has happened, and so this is the year that we're in currently, this is our first year bringing back three of those days. And really what has happened over time is, especially as we transitioned away from No Child Left Behind into ESA and the whole continuous improvement planning phases that we're required to do for our federal dollars, we just find ourselves with a shortage of time to bring teachers together to do the work that we need to do. We recognize that trying to come back, trying to go back to the five early release days was too much of a jump, so the current year that we're in and the proposal for next year have the three early release days.
And the BHS question?
Oh, and BHS. So, as far as the amount of time that's missed for testing, that's something I don't have a specific answer to, but it's something I can certainly talk to Principal Green and his leadership team about.
That would be great, 'cause I feel like there's not really a reason that everybody stays home from school and, well, certain grades.
You're talking about the, the weekly Wednesday shortened days and that's what you're talking?
Well, right now, you're talking about the testing window that we're in right now with the state testing.
I'm talking about the test window where, you know, or if there's 10th graders who have to take a test, then everybody has no school at BHS. So, I just feel like that's a, we know that we need more learning hours, not fewer learning hours. So, if we're adding early release days back in the schedule and we're taking, we're not, still having the late start and early release, I, I have a concern with that.
Okay, I'm happy to chat with Principal Green and.
Great.
The biggest issue is space. It came up a couple of years ago with the way the tests were moderated, because like the, the confinement we have as a high school, we lack the space to hold both a regular class environment and a testing environment with the space required for moderating one of the standardized tests.
So, great point, and how can we resolve that?
Commissioner Wick, quick question.
Does this agenda item require board approval tonight? I'm just wondering, or is it just a report to us?
I believe it's just, in the past, Stephanie's just coming, this is information.
Okay, so we don't have to approve the school agenda, the school year?
Calendar?
No. We've always approved it before.
It's been presented.
It's been presented.
It doesn't require a vote.
Well, if you wanna approve it, I mean.
Yeah, one, Commissioner Pillsbury?
Okay, so we're not, we're, we're gonna have school on Martin Luther King Day?
So, our plan, well, the plan that we had tried to have this year, but it ended up being a snow day.
Yeah.
We're hoping to try that next year, which, we wanted to strike a balance, because the, there are a number of things that happen throughout the city. And so, in talking with folks in the city, Echo and other agencies that run opportunities for staff and for families, we've tried to balance that with our own needs. So, what we had put in the calendar for this year, which is what we were proposing for next year, is that we would be, we would be in session in the morning and have a noontime dismissal, so that students and teachers could participate in the events that are happening in the community. That's what we had put on the calendar for this year, but then we ended up having a snow day.
I know, there was, there was a lot of criticism about that. I, I heard a lot of criticism, I think people are thinking that we, why are we not having celebration of that day as, as a non-school day for children to be involved in, in the city and service opportunities that go on? I, I think we heard a lot of criticism this year about that, and I, and I'm surprised we're not reacting to that, at least responding to that. The second thing I need to say is that there was a policy that this board did make with, with a lot of community engagement to respect at least the three major religious communities in this city, Muslim, Jewish, and Christian. And, and the, there was a lot of community engagement, and the, the rabbis and the imams and a lot of people got involved, and there was an agreement that we would take off if Eid was part of the school year, our school, actual school day, it's not going to be this year. Actually, it's June 4th, but we're not taking it off. We would, we would always break to allow our, our students who are Muslim to observe that day without having the pressure of being in school or have, not being able to be with their family. And we had, Yom Kippur was the other day that the rabbi said was the most high religious holiday for the Jewish community. And Ryon Kippur was a day we would have off, it was on a school day. So, we, we are a community that's diverse, we are a community that talks about, we, we respect cultures and go on, and then we require basically our two major communities to have their children involved in school, where basically the Christians get, get the holiday, the major holidays off. That doesn't seem that we're really saying, we're really acting out our words.
Yeah, actually, we are actually acting. We had extensive conversations last year, a year before, and we, we did connect with faith communities, and we had some really good conversation in terms of what we need to do to support and honor the faith. There are more than three faiths in our schools, we have several faiths. We have people who practice Sikh, who are Baha'i, who have, who are Buddhist, that also have significant holy days. And we wanted to find out, how do we respect everyone? So, we went with the approach, and the memo's also attached here, we, and we went through this year, and I, I've actually had really good positive feedback on that. I had two communications and they were from Christian families, and what they wanted was also to include, recognize Easter and Good Friday, those are the, the two, the two pieces. And I did get communication from one specific rabbi that liked our memo and said to recognize it, but other than that, I think we've done a good job this year, 'cause the, I don't know what feedback you've gotten, people have been very supportive in terms of ensuring that we don't have exams or critical programming happening for all those kids who are different types of faiths, not just the three major ones. I mean, it's not just about protecting the rights of the majority, but we have to look at the rights of the minority. If there's one child, then we have to do that as well too. The other thing that you asked about, what was the first thing you asked about?
Martin Luther King.
Oh, Martin Luther King. I did send a memo out about that and a rationale around that, that, and based on the conversations we've had with students, many, there are students who are fortunate enough that their parents actually take them out to the community events and they get an opportunity, but there are many, many students who don't. So, we wanted to ensure that on that day that we did recognize Martin Luther King, so that morning. So that morning, we're going to, once again, try to focus our learnings on civil rights, MLK, and other civil rights issues on that morning. And then students are welcome to go out and be with their parents. Of course, parents are always free to choose to take their children for other learnings. And I think I had one or two parents that said they, they had plans for things that they were going to do and they communicated and they would do that, too. I had really good responses from the community around that. Thought it was a great idea. It was unfortunate that it did snow day. And we also had students, one of the things that happens is our students participate in a lot of the, the activities across the city and they're usually facilitated by our staff. And staff said it actually was helpful because they could have the kids come to school and the transportation, everything. And also working in partnership with SITO and ECHO, they're in support of us doing that. So we, we think it's a good idea in terms of being a learning organization that we want to focus on learning about MLK on that day and ensure that every one of our students get exposure to something that day, but yet still have. So that's the rationale about it. And I did send a memo around, around it. But of course, the board is free to, to talk about it and give me direction if you think that's not appropriate.
Commissioner Ivanchuk?
Well, I disagree with you on Martin Luther King Day. And I thought, I think that was a well-earned holiday in this country. It was not, so you probably know a lot of facts about it. And I do agree we should educate our children about it, but I think that they have a lot of opportunities throughout the city to do that. So the holiday was not signed into law until 83, which was 15 years after Dr. King was assassinated. And wasn't, it was first observed in 86. And not until 2000 was it first observed in all the states. One little factoid that I found is that six million signatures were collected for a petition to Congress to pass this thing into law. So it was one of the single petitions that had the most signatures in history. And nowadays, corporate America still does not observe this holiday. It is observed by our government and by most public universities. It is the only holiday that recognizes people of color and symbolizes a movement for social equality for all. And the BHS Social Justice Club, Social Justice Union planned a walkout on that day. So God didn't want us to have school that day because it was a snow day. But if we had school that day, BHS had planned a walkout. So the school district has observed this holiday for, can somebody clarify how many years? At least 10?
Well, as long as we've had it, we've, we've observed it.
And I think that we should, in honor of Martin Luther King, we should continue observing this as a holiday in our district.
So can I just add, just for, just for people's information? If, if, I wish you had read my memo and read some background around. This is not a holiday. This was set as a day of service. This was a day where we're trying to encourage our community, our staff and our students to go out and give service in what Martin Luther King talked about giving back, right? And when we did the conversations with our students and staff, many people are not doing that. And we wanted to kind of recognize what Martin Luther King stood for. It wasn't a holiday for people to take off and relax. It's not a holiday. And I don't, I don't even use that term because it is a day of service, a day of observance to find, to talk about and to...
If it's a day of service.
Can I just, can I finish? That's, that's the rationale. If you look at the federal, the federal statement, it's a day of service. So that's our rationale. That's the rationale I put forward. That's what I, I worked with our staff to talk about. And I think it's, it's a good thing for our kids to understand what the day's about. If you think it's a day that we should have off, because the slogan from the federal government is the day on, not a day off, is to actually be on, on service. But if that's what you want to do, then you're, you're in your rights to do that. I mean, I don't need to kind of debate it back and forth, I mean.
Commissioner Currie?
Yeah, I'd like to support, support having it a day on, not a day off. That is what the, many organizations around the country have moved to. And I spoke with our community partner at the city, Marcella Genge, who really appreciated that the school actually decided to be involved in working with the city to coordinate activities and participate in activities. And it really gives everybody a chance to show up and celebrate together and to remember Martin Luther King Jr. and what his values and ideals stood for. And the alternative, I think, is people just go away and actually don't engage. So I really support it as a day of engagement. It's not a day of being in the classroom and doing rote work. It's a day of really thinking out, thinking differently and learning differently. And I think that's what we are trying to strive for.
I think Superintendent O'Bang would agree that we can do a better job as a district. You know, but we left it up to the schools to define what that day meant or that curriculum and, you know, with the board's support. You know, again, we can still discuss this and give feedback at a later date, but that we could be supportive in what that looks like or supportive of the community. At least now going forward, whatever decisions made, you know, we're in the know. I think a lot of people, you know, ourselves included, were not, you know, did not pay attention to it until that December when we found out. And I think that's where the negativity sort of spun from, that we weren't, it wasn't something that everyone was aware of and it came up as a surprise. So I would like to, if it's possible, move on from this so that we can get to our time bound. And do you mind if we follow up that conversation with Superintendent O'Bang?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to commend the students that wanted to do the walkout because that's exactly what Martin Luther King said to be an activist.
Understood. Commissioner Fisher?
Commissioner Pillsbury, would you like to make a motion that the board would vote on? I, I saw that you were speaking extemporaneously. Is there a motion that you want to bring forward if you want the board to act?
Well, it seems like, it just, it seems like my, I guess, I'm, I'm of the opinion that it's the representatives of the people should be able to vote on the calendar for their, for their students to be in it. It's not just a decision.
So I invite you to make a motion and then the whole board can deliberate or vote. It shouldn't just be the, I agree, it shouldn't be the chair that says we're, we're not going to make a decision. It's up to the board, but it's up to a board member to put forward a motion.
Commissioner Wick, has something to say?
Point of order, because I, I respect absolutely what you two are talking about. I would suggest, in the interest of our idea that, number one, we don't want to quell conversation. This is an important topic, scheduling, everything that everyone's brought up tonight, Kendra, et cetera. Unless there's the desire to attempt to not approve this thing, it was my, the calendar, sorry. I would suggest that we either add this as an additional, add it for next week or even go deeper at our board retreat. Because I do believe, what you said Keith, what, what you said Mike, very important. It bears further discussion, questions of whether the board or the super should be approving the calendar. We need to look into that and all the other substantive issues. So I think in the interest of time, unless anyone really wants to put a kind of halt to the, to the calendar, which, which is something a commissioner, as Mike said, can make a motion on, I'm wondering, would, would everybody be, would, would you be okay if we continued this to either next week or the board retreat? I'm just wondering.
I would hope for next week so that we can distribute the calendar to the schools and the community so people have it, so it's something we could, what I suggested earlier was we would discuss it with the superintendent and bring it back next Tuesday.
Now I would, if I'm not out of order, I would ask the superintendent, when do you need to get a definitive answer, if any? I understand your position is I don't really need the board's approval, so...
No, I mean, if the board wants to weigh in on this, I mean, that's the board's privilege to do that, if you want to do that. We've presented what we're going to put forward. We get many queries from both staff and community parents that want to know the calendar for next year. So we would just be saying, we're waiting for approval from the board until it gets approved.
Is next week going to be hardship?
Not, not for me.
Right. So next Tuesday, the 21st. All right? Thank you.
We tabled, one thing tonight, we can table this calendar and talk about it next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yep. It's not a decision, so it's all right. So next kindergarten staffing update. Okay.
9:45, I think Commissioner Fisher is saying, right?
Yep.
Okay, so can we...
Make a motion to move into executive session. We're waiting for Joe to arrive momentarily so we can all head over to the BTC Cafe.
Commissioner Fisher, are you going to make that motion? Can you add the employment recommendation to it as well?
Oh, but then, yeah, the employment recommendation.
So I just want to make a motion to table 9D and 9E. Actually, I'm sorry, table 9C, 9D, 9E, 10A, 10B.
I'll second that.
Oh, well, we're going to come back and do the counseling? We're going to, you got to do that?
Yeah, I'm going to do that right now, after he does that.
I second that. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. 9C, 9D, 9E, and 10A.
E and 10A, thank you.
Could I make the motion, if I may, to go into executive session under one VSAT 313 for the following purposes? One is to deliberate on and then come back out and decide the superintendent's recommendation for the director of guidance. Two is to discuss one or more personal, personnel matters and a brief superintendent evaluation update.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, we'll move to the BTC Cafe. All right, we're back in session. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to hire Meg Hughart as the BHS Guidance Director. Starting on July 1. Superintendent O'Bang, is that when her contract starts? July 1?
July 1, yes. It's on a consent agenda.
Great.
Point of order. Should the motion be, can I amend the motion to also approve all the other recommended hires on that consent agenda item?
We already did. We approved the whole consent agenda.
Just pulled this one.
You just pulled that one name?
Yeah, that's it.
Super.
All right, so second? Commissioner Sowers? Pillsbury, Commissioner Pillsbury, did you turn out that? Second is Commissioner Sowers. Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. May I have a motion to move back into executive session?
Second?
Commissioner Ivanchuk, second. Commissioner Wick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We'll move back into executive session.